Open the shades. Green Warren County Planning Commission Meeting, and McKinnon, if you would call the role, please.
Sheriff Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Cassidy.
Here.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our May the 4th meeting in your packet. Are there any questions? We'll call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
abstain.
Commissioner Cassidy.
abstain.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Ritchie.
abstain.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you have the subdivision site development plans in your packet. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. They are approved as submitted. Our new business, Megan, our financial report for the third quarter, please.
Right, everybody should have a packet of the third quarter budget in their packets, short and sweet. As far as income goes, we're right on track with the exception of our NPO related funds. And that's just because you guys know in the fourth quarters when we receive the bulk of that income. So I checked it today and we're actually closer to seventy-five percent instead of that thirty-seven percent that you guys have on your budgets. And as far as our total income at the end of the third quarter, we're at seventy-three point one percent, which pretty much right on target there. And as far as our total expenditures, we're at seventy-six. So we're a little bit under budget on those. Don't really have any big significant changes or anything to the budget right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions for Megan? I guess this is just a informational, or do we, we don't need a motion? All right. Commissioners, any questions for Megan? Thank you very much.
Right, thanks guys.
All right. Commissioners, in your packets, we have the two letters of credit and performance bonds. Windsor Trace Farms and Autumn View in the amount of a hundred and ten, Windsor Trace in ten thousand and Autumn View in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Any questions? We'll call for a motion, please.
移到
Sheriff Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
abstain.
Commissioner Cassidy.
abstain.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Ritchie.
abstain.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. The motion is approved. Is there any old business, Mr. Peterson? No old business. We will enter into our public hearings. Mr. Hampton Moore, we entered our public hearing. Would you call our witnesses, please?
I request that you order that the record for tonight include all of the statutory and regulatory provisions that govern your business tonight, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to each of those witnesses.
Y'all swear to tell the truth?
Yes sir.
Thank you very much. All right, our first hearing tonight is twenty twenty-three oh five Flume. M-N-M LLC, care of Matt Fuqua, has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of tract of land containing approximately four tenths of an acre located zero University Drive, formerly five seventeen University Drive, from institutional government to moderate density residential.
Thank you Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in November for the property you just referenced on University Drive. And the applicants are proposing to amend the future land use map for roughly four tenths of an acre. And if the future land use map amendment is approved, the applicants would like to later file a zone change application to rezone the same area to RS one D in order to subdivide the property into two building lots. This is the aerial view of the property and the zoning map which reflects the current zoning of RS one A. And the current land use is vacant. And, or, the current future land use map is institutional and government. And the request this evening is an amendment to the future land use map to go to moderate density residential. And with that, we have provided a staff recommendation for approval. Pending public hearing testimony and discussion of a couple of items that we've listed on the bottom of page one. The first item is that the applicant has not provided documentation proving that the proposed amendment will not result in development that exceeds the capacity of the existing infrastructure. That's part of the criteria to amend the Flume in LU one point one point four. And that's referenced on page three under the criteria three analysis. And then the second item is relating to density on page four. And let me jump to that section really quick. And the staff has just noted in the density section of the report that densities in the area range from zero to eight point two six dwelling units per acre. The median density is two point nine two dwelling units per acre and the average is three point zero nine dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development is four point six one, which is just over one and a half times the median. But that is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Rachel, I have a question.
Yes sir.
I noticed in the staff recommendation, do we have the documentation that was required regarding the infrastructure?
We do not.
Okay. I'll ask that of the
The applicant may plan to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes sir.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hart? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is the applicant here or their representative to address these issues?
Good afternoon, Chris Davenport, nine twenty-one College Street, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you. Commissioners, good evening. So I'd like to provide just a little backstory here, very, very briefly, in addition to what Rachel provided. This was a, this property was destroyed by the tornado. And so that's why it's now vacant. One time, there was one home built on what you see was previously two platted lots. And so, not to go in too much detail, but when the tornado happened and the home was destroyed, the owner went to apply for permits to build on these two lots. And there was a disagreement between the permitting staff and my client over what was allowed. Long story short. So as an attempt to alleviate that disagreement, we decided that it would probably best just to rezone these two lots. And what we found out, we were going to rezone it to RS one D. And if you look at your density figure, four point six, we were like a hundred and sixty square feet short of complying with that. That's why we're here on a flume change. Okay, so the request that's being made is essentially to build two homes on what used to be two platted lots that have since become non-conforming. Because if you look on your, up here, you can see that these lots don't go as deep as the one to the left. So many, many years ago, there was a home built behind, again, I don't think that's all necessary for tonight's purposes. But that's what's precipitated this request. So it started off, we thought we could just do a zone change, but because we were a few square feet short, the density number was higher, that required the moderate density. Commissioner Starks, as for the infrastructure issues or questions, I guess, we had a pre-app in this, like we always do. And, you know, frankly, looking through the pre-app notes, obviously there's sewer available. I don't have handy in front of me the water pressure. But I would submit to you that, number one, this is University Drive. This is in the middle of basically town. We are adding, or we're requesting, one additional home here. That's the difference. They could pull a permit today for one home. They could not pull a permit for two. And so, in working with staff, we tried, and I understand this is a flume night, and these procedures have changed a little bit. We don't, we're not going to do the zone change tonight if the flume is granted. But in looking at the compatibility and the scaling and those things, we did go ahead and file the application so you can see what we're planning. We think that certainly the addition of one home there would not overburden the infrastructure, given where it is and the slight increase in the number. These are single, these would be single-family homes between twelve hundred, sixteen hundred square feet, to give you an idea of the, I guess, the intensity of those structures on the infrastructure.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Davenport?
So, so Chris, did you say this was, these were already two platted lots?
So for, I'm talking like in plat book one, if I recall right. I think I'm right about that. The original plat book in Bowling Green, that were included these plats. And over the years, there was by deed, some of the back area of the lots deeded off onto another parcel. And what that's created is these two lots that no longer conform to the minimum square footage of RS one A. Or I forget where they fall on the chart. But long story short, we were just going to rezone this to RS one D. But we had to flume it, and we had to flume it in a moderate because of the overall density of these two lots. I guess we would have had to, let me back up. It is governmental, which I forgot. We, I guess we would have had to flume it anyways. But the reason it's moderate density instead of low is because we're a hundred and sixty square feet short on the combined total of these two non-conforming lots.
Two houses should go on these lots.
Pardon me?
Two houses should go on these lots. That's kind of what I was asking, the
The effort, and I'll say this Commissioner Graham, in the effort to fit in staff identified homes in the area with certain setbacks, square footage, we actually have a DPC that provides a range of square footage. So we don't put a house too big for the lot that doesn't conform and stand out. We don't want that to happen. So we've, if this flume change is approved, and we, when we come back on the zone change, those DPCs are designed to create a home with setbacks that fit in with what's there.
So we're going to get a shot at the DPCs when they, when you come back?
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. No more questions?
Thank you.
Commissioners, any, Mr. Grant, Mr. Davenport, before you leave, any other questions, commissioners?
I have one, and it's related to Rachel's presentation. And whenever she introduced this, she mentioned that it's part of our plan that you actually supplied this documentation for this to be approved, so I mean, I don't
Well, again, I'll go back to the staff notes and the concerns that were brought, Commissioner Sissel, or were not brought at that time. And frankly, given the fact that those were not noted, and given, again, the nature of this request, I guess it kind of goes without saying, we certainly feel like two homes on these two lots would not overburden what's in that area.
Is it hard to get the documentation?
Well, the only documentation I guess we don't have would be necessarily would be the water flow rate. We do know the sewer is available. We do know that, obviously, that we know what traffic is there. When we had these meetings, the traffic authorities are involved in that. Our DPCs include no traffic improvements at all, because those won't be necessary if the flume is approved. So I guess the only thing I could supplement at this point would be a water flow rate. I don't know if my engineer knows that off the top of his head, but given the intense, oh, here comes Mr. Caldwell right now. Maybe, maybe I got saved by the bell.
Jase Caldwell, Bayou Meter and Slavy, twenty-five nineteen Kenbell Boulevard.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes sir.
Thank you.
According to the Kentucky Division of Water website, there is an eight inch water line that runs in front of this property, which would be more than adequate to serve one house additional. So that's all I have. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant or their representative? Thank you very much.
Chair.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has questions regarding this proposed amendment? If you have comments, yes ma'am. Come to the microphone, please. Yes ma'am, you have three minutes, okay? And your name and address?
My name's Katina Minor. I reside in the lots right behind.
Okay.
The address is eighteen ten
Your address?
Yes, eighteen ten Craig Street.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so I live at eighteen ten Craig Street. Those are the lots just above the ones that are being discussed. And I moved to Bowling Green in July twenty fourteen. I moved to the Cedar Ridge neighborhood because it's walkable to McNeil Elementary. It's walkable to WKU, and it was calm and tree-filled until the tornado. The tornado obviously changed that for our family and for our neighbors. We lost fourteen trees on our lot, and we spent a year displaced. Right now, I think one of the reasons that very few people from our neighborhood are here is because what doesn't show up on your map is that we are one of only two houses on Craig Street that are occupied right now. There's still vacant homes, homes under repair, and homes that were completely obliterated and destroyed. So we think are the only people actually living in this area that got the notice. The other homes, again, are still vacant. Let me be clear that we want to see construction on this lot. I would have loved to see a home there yesterday. We felt very exposed. And the whole neighborhood obviously feels different since the tornado. So we're eager to see our neighborhood restored. But what we don't want to see is this flume amendment opening the door to changes that are inconsistent with Cedar Ridge and with the Cedar Ridge focal point plan. A shift to moderate density is a change that would not have occurred but for the natural disaster. And I think we don't want to see these established neighborhoods, valued neighborhoods like Cedar Ridge, changing just because we were unlucky to be in the path of this tornado. We want to see the character and density of the neighborhood preserved. And we don't want developers which have bought other lots, also either right next to this one or just around the corner, to use this amendment to shift to moderate density and change the established neighborhood environment. So again, apparently it's a hundred and sixty-four square feet, or a hundred and sixty square feet short. That is close, but it opens the door, if you go to moderate, to all the way up to thirteen dwellings per square acre, which would be entirely inconsistent with this neighborhood. So we're very concerned about a slippery slope going forward. I think that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment so much.
And my husband is here as well.
Any other additional comments other than that?
Yeah, just, I'll keep it short.
Okay, thank you. Yes sir, if you would state your name and address, please sir?
Jeffrey Minor, eighteen ten Craig Street.
Okay.
I wanted to say, to reiterate what my wife said, but also suggest that I would have liked to see at least some documentation about the traffic patterns and what has been done there. There is, at peak times of day, quite a bit of traffic backing up. Sorry, that was my wife's three minutes running out there. I was keeping time. There's quite a bit of traffic along University at peak times of the day, often backing up, people waiting to turn left towards the roundabout. And if studies have been done where there is documentation or explanation that would justify the traffic patterns, actually being able to house the additional driveways and left-hand turns across University Road, I would very much like to have seen it. Again, we would love to see something built there. We're concerned primarily about what redoing the flume in this lot might mean for other lots nearby that are currently distressed and unoccupied due to tornado. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir, Mr. Minor. The, was the traffic study required?
No, there was no traffic study required. And I guess just to clarify, the pre-app notes, we know there's water available in the area, and we know there's sufficient roadway as far as width and the condition of that roadway. We know there's sewer available in the area, but I guess just, our point is, is that that's an application requirement that the applicant address when they fill out the application, and it just simply wasn't mentioned in the application. So it's, the burden of proof is on them just to explain to you all how they feel that they are not going to burden the existing infrastructure.
Thank you, Rachel. Is there anyone else in the audience that, yes sir, if you would come to the microphone, something different than traffic, sewer, and water? Yes sir, and your name?
I'm Tony Harkins. I'm at nineteen hundred Cedar Ridge Road, Bowling Green around the corner.
Yes sir, Mr. Harkins, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I've lived in that, in that house for twenty years. And one of the things that drew us to the neighborhood was the low-density housing. And that that is, that is not just by accident. That was a, we developed a neighborhood association, Cedar Ridge Neighborhood Association, because of the development on Creason Road. And that apartment complex, and so we've established a rule for, you know, no more than, I think, not quoting me, but I think the rule is no more than two non-related members, you know, in a house. And when that Creason Road apartments was built, there were two more built very quickly thereafter, which were sold to other owners and were not treated as well. So the concern I share with the miners is that it's not become an opening for transforming the whole Cedar Ridge neighborhood to moderate housing status. There are a number of houses which were damaged badly in the tornado that have been purchased by various realty interests. And we want to make sure that that neighborhood stays the way it is and stays a school-centered, you know, centered around McNeil School, walkable, and generally family-centered neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Stark.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a question or an opposition to this request? So we've heard these, the comments from the applicant and the neighbors. So we call for a motion, please.
Chair. Motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty twenty-three oh five Flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU dash one point one point four in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Cassidy.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. The motion has been approved, the planning and zoning final action. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-three oh six Flume. Oliver and Hansbrough Development Partners LLC, care of Darryl Oliver and Benjamin Hansbrough, has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of tract of land containing approximately three point one six acres located zero Karen Simpson Road from agriculture to low-density residential.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting for the property on Karen Simpson Road back in April of this year. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume for approximately three acres to low-density residential. If the flume amendment is successful, the applicants would later like to file an application to rezone the same area from Ag to RE in order to subdivide the property into three building lots. So the current zoning of the property, oh, there's an aerial for you all. Current zoning is Ag, current land use is vacant. And then again, that future land use designation is agriculture. So looking down to the bottom of page one, staff's recommendation for this application is for approval. And pending any public hearing testimony and then discussion of a couple of points. So staff found the proposed flume amendment to be generally in agreement with LU one point one point four and compatible with the surrounding area. There are a couple of considerations. One relating to proposed water availability, so we'll flip over to page four and look at that. So looking under water adequacy, about midway down the page, it is served by the Warren County Water District, and the applicants did not provide documentation verifying that there is adequate water to serve the proposed development, nor did they certify that the proposed development will not impact the capacity of the existing water line to serve the existing surrounding properties. Then looking over to the minimum home size on page five, under surrounding architectural features, within a quarter of a mile in Warren County, along and south of WD Tally Road to the county line, homes range from eight hundred and eighty-four square feet to twenty-nine hundred square feet, with a median home size of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five and an average of one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. The applicants are proposing a minimum of sixteen hundred. This is a hundred and sixty-five square feet less than the median in Warren County. And the proposed home size also appears to be less than the square footage for a majority of the homes in the adjacent Cornerstone Point subdivision. Those are estimated from a twenty twenty-three aerial view since they are located in Allen County. And then the final consideration would be moving down to the building materials and the percentage of vinyl. And so roughly sixty-five percent of the homes are brick with brick foundations. The remaining homes have exteriors comprised of a mix of vinyl wood and stone. All but one of the homes have a brick or stone foundation, and many of the homes in the Cornerstone Point subdivision have vinyl exteriors. Some incorporate brick and stone along the front facade or as accent materials. Staff suggested imposing a minimum percentage of non-vinyl exterior that will be complementary to the existing homes in the area. However, that was not addressed by the applicants. So that is all that we have for this application, but I'm happy to answer any of y'all's questions.
So the houses, if I'm looking at the aerial, the houses that sit right behind this lot, those are the ones that you say are sixty-five percent of brick and hardy?
So, no. So that's the Cornerstone Point subdivision. The quarter of a mile, that's looking into Warren County. So along and south of WD Tally Road, so a little north of this, of this plot.
So just, just to clarify, tonight is only the flume, but they're telling us what their intent is for this project? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so they've supplied preliminary development plan conditions to help with their compatibility argument.
But that's not what we're voting for. All we're doing is flume.
Correct. And so if you, if you choose to approve this, you should reasonably expect when the zone change application is filed that their development plan conditions should be the same.
Should be the same as these?
Or improved.
Okay, okay. Okay, or improved, okay, thank you.
So do we want to address those here tonight, or just wait until they bring back the, the application?
Because it's their compatibility argument. So if some of these points for discussion are important to you as far as addressing compatibility, then you would want to sort that out this evening.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Is the applicant here? And, all right, Mr. Davenport?
Good evening again, and I still swear to tell the truth. So Darryl Oliver's here somewhere. Darryl, where are you? He's in the back. So it really is up to y'all how you all address this, Commissioner Graham. My suggestion would be to, I mean, basically, the points to consider are your exterior materials. That's, that's what staff has raised. My client has brought information in regarding those parcels that sit on the county line that staff really don't have access to. I think there's a mention of that. I've got photographs of those homes. I've got information regarding the exterior facades. My suggestion would be wait till we do the zoning to do that. But that's y'all's decision. And the reason I say that is, if you only take a vote on the flume tonight, I really don't know how you bind that applicant on those DPCs. And you're going to want to bind the applicant to whatever it is he or she agrees to. I understand that. Right now, the application calls for vinyl. Darryl tells me that's what the majority of those homes are. I've got photographs of them, but I would suggest that could be presented at the zone change. All we're asking for tonight is two additional homes on the, which would be RE lots over an acre in that development. So I'm happy to address it however y'all want to address it.
So for me, I would say this. I think I agree with the process. I would advise your client that it's going to be a concern. And so it would probably be in your best interest to address that before you come back with the, with the application.
I don't think I'm divulging any secrets to let, to say we've already discussed in that.
All right, very good.
So So-
Thank you.
Uh, I will say one thing about the water. Uh, I think that, I think Rachel's got some email chain with, uh, Jace Caldwell. There was actually confusion over whether water, uh, Warren County, excuse me, or Allen County served this property. It's so close to the county line. I thought we had satisfied that in the meantime, though.
Yeah, that may be the case. I remember the email, and Jace may be able to clarify that. Uh, I remember Warren County Water replying, saying that they preferred that Allen County would serve the property because they had, uh, better infrastructure on their side. Um, but I don't know that I ever saw any response from Allen County saying that they agreed to do that, but I don't know if Jace can speak to that.
Let Jace try to speak to that.
Hello again. So, uh, Allen County and Warren County were kinda arguing over who wanted to take this. They had very similar facilities. Um, I believe they were both four-inch water lines, and they both said that they didn't mind serving it. So it's, it was kinda in limbo, but I think Allen County will be the final person that does serve that. But both facilities are adequate for the proposal.
So both were adequate?
Both were.
No issues there?
That's correct.
So I guess we don't have a preference then, as long as they get it served, correct? All right, very good.
While I'm up here, I had another thing that was brought up to me in the back, um, about Karen Simpson Road. I just wanted to point out that we were addressing that that was a narrow road and that we were gonna close it or widen it to whatever we need to do to meet that. So wanted to point that out. That's one of the DPCs.
Okay.
We had a-
That's your proposing-
Private conversation back there. I wanted to make sure we were all on the same page there. Yep.
Thank you, Jace. Is there anyone, uh, commissioners, any other questions of Mr. Oliver or Mr. Davenport? Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a, uh, question or opposition to this request? Yes, sir. If you would come to the microphone, please? If you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
Uh, Matthew Hire, five-seven-two WG Tally Road.
Yes, sir. You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, this-
Is your last name was?
Hire. H-I-R-E. Uh, just had a couple of concerns. I know that, uh, he had mentioned about Karen Simpson Road not being wide enough. It's pretty much a little gravel road, and we've already got a lot of traffic coming from the Quarterstone that was just built in that little community just on the other side of the line. And a lot of that traffic's coming through Karen Simpson, in which is going on to WG Tally. And WG Tally itself isn't a regulation-sized road. Um, I mean, it's hard to get two cars down that road. Uh, so with us trying to convert that over to residential, it could cause some major hazards on traffic going down Karen Simpson and WG Tally. Um, and also, I think if we go and convert that over to residential, it's kind of a pathway to where you've got the sixteen acres that's right there, right beside it going down WG Tally, that I think eventually they'll try to convert that over, which make traffic even worse. But, um, also, you know, you got people on bikes, walking and everything else, and with that not being a regular road on Karen or WG Tally, this makes it, you know, traffic hazard.
Thank you, sir, for tra- your concerns of traffic.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hire. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a question or an opposition to this request? So commissioners, we are, uh, tonight, uh, just voting on the flume amendment, and they will come back with the zoning. So, uh, we call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty-two-three zero-six flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU dash one point one point four in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Casada?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel? Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
The motion, yes, ma'am. The motion has been approved, uh, for the flume amendment. And our next item tonight, uh, is planning zoning final action. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-three oh-seven flume. Chandler Holdings LLC care of David Chandler has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of landing and taking approximately seventy-two point six-two acres located zero portion in nine-eight-eight Nashville Road from low-density residential to commercial, high-density residential, and institutional government. Ms. Hurd?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We've actually had two pre-application meetings for this property, uh, one back in twenty-twenty-two and then one earlier this year in February. And the applicants are proposing to amend the future land use map, uh, in order to develop a mixture of uses on the properties. Um, if the future land use map amendment is successful, the applicants would like to later file an application to rezone these same areas from ag to RM four, general business and public, in order to develop the property with a mix of commercial and multifamily uses as well as a new school. Another portion of the development is planned for RS-one-D and is flume compliant. And that would be, for reference, uh, this area here. Uh, looking at the aerial view of the property, um, and then the zoning, which is agriculture, and the land use is also agriculture and single-family residential. And then the future land use map is currently low-density residential. And let me jump back to the concept plan here, and we'll keep moving through the staff report. Um, you'll see that we have provided a recommendation at the bottom of page one, and the staff recommendation is for denial pending discussion of the following items and the public hearing testimony. Uh, so the first item for your consideration is that the properties are currently designated as low-density on the future land use map. This designates, designation was recently established by the Planning Commission in November of twenty-twenty-two during the comprehensive plan five-year update process. Before this time, the future land use map designation was agriculture. And the applicant has now requested to amend the future land use map to high-density residential, commercial, and institutional and government. The institutional and government portion of the request is new, uh, is for a new elementary school, and that the, the proposed location of the school was not known or anticipated at the time of the recent comp plan update and flume amendment in November. On page two, uh, the proposal may not protect the current rural agricultural and residential character of the area since it introduces a higher-density multifamily residential product at a bulk and scale not present. The nearest RM four intensity multifamily development is located roughly three point eight miles to the north, across from the South Central Kentucky Industrial Park on Bourbon Street. During the pre-application meeting, staff suggested a moderate-density flume designation and RM-three style of development that would be more compatible with the rural area and complementary to the nearest multifamily development at Stewart Farm, uh, which includes two-story buildings with no more than eight units per building. If the flume amendment to high-density residential is approved, the applicant is proposing nineteen buildings with a maximum height of three stories and five buildings with a maximum height of two stories. All buildings are proposed to contain more than eight units per acre, or eight units per building, and the proposed increase in intensity and density of the land use allowed by the high-density residential flume category is not found in this area of the community. Uh, looking below, uh, the densest residential application recently approved along Nashville Road was for the twenty-acre tract of land located adjacent to South Warren High School. The overall approved density for this development is ten point oh-four dwelling units per acre. And the nearest residential developments recently approved in proximity to this proposal include South Park Commons at a density of roughly three dwelling units per acre and the Tartar Development behind Cheney's Dairy Barn at a density of roughly two dwelling units per acre. If the flume amendment is approved, the multifamily portion of the development could contain a density of twelve point three-nine dwelling units per acre. Additional areas of consideration, uh, include, I will touch on those, starting on page four, uh, looking at the criteria three analysis. Um, I will note that after the staff report was finalized, we did receive correspondence from KYTC, and they have actually requested that a traffic impact study be performed and submitted. We did consult with the applicants, um, and should you approve the flume amendment tonight, they would be required to submit that traffic impact study with the zone change application. Jumping over to page six, looking at the, uh, prime farmland, we've just noted that roughly ninety-nine percent of the property is designated as prime farmland. Uh, below that, you should have an extra page at your seat. Uh, there was supposed to be an attachment, and I forgot that, so my apologies. Um, but touching on the cultural and historical features, uh, we have noted that the property at ninety-eight eighty-eight Nashville Road is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The residence is known as the Merritt Harden Home and was constructed in the mid eighteen-hundreds. It is featured in the early Warren County Landmarks Book by Irene Moss Sumter. And the staff suggested that the applicants incorporate and repurpose the historic structure as a part of the commercial portion of the development, but this was left unaddressed. Um, then looking at the density, I can jump to the density map really quick here. Uh, just for your reference, I touched on density just a minute ago, um, so I won't go through that section again, uh, but here is the overall density in the area if you're curious. Um, then looking at the surrounding land uses, if we go to the land use map, uh, you can see that almost every property between Michael Obicanum Park and Woodburn is agricultural in use, except for a handful of residential estate tracts and vacant lots. And then touching on the architectural features on page seven, uh, we did touch on the building height, uh, earlier, so that's also there for your reference. And then finally, under proposed open space on page seven, the applicants, uh, agreed that the development, if approved, would include a clubhouse and pool among oth- other amenities, uh, but they did not specify what those other amenities would include. Uh, I believe that is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer, answer any questions.
How many, how many acres?
Uh, yeah, it should be on the plot.
Eleven acres.
Eleven, okay. Is it elementary?
Elementary, you're right.
It was a middle school.
I believe it's an elementary school. So if we said middle school, that might be a typo on our part.
Was it meant to be part of the Warren County school system?
Yes.
My understanding is Rich Pond is overflowing.
It's an elementary- So Rachel, um, can we go back to, your, your first, uh, uh, point to consider was in November of twenty-twenty-two, um, the, we, I guess, uh, reestablished the flume in that area. Had, but you also said that they, you didn't know that the school was going there at that time?
Correct.
How would the presence of the school have affected that?
We likely would have gone ahead and designated it for the institutional and government classification had we known that at the time.
So if it be before November of twenty-two, y'all might not have had the recommendation for a denial?
No, I'm saying that the, instead of us amending, if we go back to the future land use map, instead of designating the entire area as low-density, we may have actually said, oh, okay, well, we know there's gonna be a school here, and we'll designate that area as the institutional and government category.
I think the question, and the question I have is, if you had known the school was coming and you had designated a section as institutional, would that have affected the density of residential adjacent and surrounding that area?
No, sir. I guess as far as the recommendation on the, the bulk and scale of the proposed structures with recommending the moderate density-
The school doesn't change your recommendation on that side.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead.
Rachel, at what point did we find out that the school, that there would be a school developed?
We were made aware of that when this application was submitted.
Okay, okay. During the first or second meeting?
Oh, the pre-application meetings? Uh, we didn't actually know about it until after the second pre-application meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How sure are we, how sure are we about this school?
We are, we are sure. Uh, Mr. McIntyre is here from Warren County Public Schools.
So, so if this school, if we, if we approve this flume amendment, we're going to have a school there, correct?
I, I can't speak to the timeline of that, uh, but that is what we have understood.
So, um, so given the, uh, I, I've got a conflict here. I've got a, I got a new school, and I've got a recommendation for denial, and I'm trying to, um, I'm trying to reconcile that. Was the school considered with this, with, with the part of this? Uh, these two seem to be joined at the hip, so to speak.
They are submitted as one application, yes.
And so, go ahead.
Oh, I, I think what Tim is, is asking is-
Pull your mic down, Christian.
I think what Tim is asking, if we have a school coming, and, and we've done in the past and looked at some stuff, I mean, high-density doesn't seem to be out of the question.
Not in some areas, but if, if we look to the north, uh, it's not on the screen, but South Warren Middle and High Schools are just to the north, and we do have multifamily in that area, but it's not at a high-density residential, uh, style of development. It's at a moderate-density style of development with the smaller eight-plex buildings at an RM-three zoning.
But Rachel, part of the question here tonight is the, the height of the multifamily, 'cause, quite, correct me if I'm wrong, the multifamily density is not that far out of line.
So that's true. Uh, the density, the, the density that they are proposing would fall within the moderate-density future land use category as far as the density range. It's just the style and bulk of buildings-
And it's the height.
With the three stories-
Yes.
That's out of character for that.
Is the height, just asking a question, the height of the buildings that are in the, on the back of it or towards the back of the agricultural land, correct?
Yeah, if we go back to the concept, the multifamily would basically be the back half of the development, where you would find your three-story structures.
And so would, is it fair to say that with the staff, that is the biggest hang-up, is this, the height?
The height and also the bulk of the buildings being up to twenty-four units per building compared to an RM-three style of development, where you would only have eight dwelling units per building. So you would, it would result in smaller building footprints.
Mr. Peterson, you had a comment.
Um, I think at this time, I'd like to suggest we hear from the applicant and hear their testimony. So one thing to keep in mind about the staff recommendation, it's prior to the applicant's testimony as well as the public. So I think to get a clear picture, let's let them have a shot at it, and then we can-
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. And we'll let Rachel off the hook.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is the applicant or the representative here, Mr. Davenport?
Chris Davenport, nine-twenty-one College. I swear to tell the truth, and now I'm on the hook. So, uh, let me first say that, uh, uh, it's a pleasure for me to present this tonight, and you are, you, you guys and girls, you ladies and gentlemen are hitting on what I wanna hit on already. And that, those are the points made in the staff. But let me just say at the outset that this, um, obviously, you can tell by the concept is a mix of commercial, school, single-family, multifamily, uh, development with the highest degree of materials, planning, and integration of those various uses. This is probably the third time I've been involved in an application that involved a school. Uh, I was involved in the Cumberland Trace School, uh, rezoning. I was involved most recently up on Morgantown Road. That school hasn't come to fruition yet, but, um, I think you can tell by Cumberland Trace, when the schools are involved as a component of these developments, the integration is really remarkable. They go out of their way to make sure that the recreational facilities at those schools are easily accessible by these, uh, communities, something they don't have to do. So they make sure that the, that the folks living in these communities have access to walking trails and the outdoor playgrounds. It's just a really cool symbiotic relationship. And I think it goes, one of my biggest points tonight is when you have a development of this size, it allows that. It allows integration, where you're not trying to, you know, squeeze a square into a round hole, uh, where maybe it doesn't really plan and, and, uh, to integrate with its surroundings around that development. So obviously, uh, Mr. Chandler and, and this developer's, uh, I guess, model that I would present to you would be the hub. Uh, we sometimes, as we've been working on this, we kinda call this the southern hub or the, the south hub. Uh, in fact, the plans that you see before you, those multifamily structures, uh, are those hub structures. And if you've been out there, you can take note, I think you should be able to take note of the architectural distinctiveness and detail, uh, the planning that goes in, that went into the hub with, uh, with, again, how those uses are integrated. So I, I feel like this is a development that frankly raises the bar for our expectations in our community, and I'm happy to be a part of it. Secondly, the, the involvement of the school, I think, exemplifies a couple of things. Number one, I think it reiterates, you know, schools, uh, don't develop where there's not a need. And the school board's involvement in this, I think, is- And the school board's involvement in this, I think, is, obviously exemplifies that. And certainly, as I said earlier, I'm very happy to be involved in a project where the school desires to be involved. I think that bodes very well for the future of the development. So when you look at the points, basically the criteria, we filed this requesting this re-fluming under two criteria. The first was a demonstrated overriding public need. We've talked about that a little bit already, and that's the school's involvement. Clearly, they don't get involved when there's not a need. Secondarily, this type of project, I think, is designed, pinpointed to target the housing needs that we have. So, we talk about that generally. We don't always go into a lot of detail. But from looking at the publications that the staff put out as a part of their video program, we did watch those. When they were updating the comp plan, they did a series of videos before they had kind of an open town hall-type meetings. And in one of those, I noted, Mr. Peterson noted that in the ten years between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty, our population grew by more than thirty-two thousand. It exceeded the projection. And I think at every time we've done this, we've exceeded the projection. We're expected to continue to grow by twenty-five hundred a year. Pursuant to those numbers, it's projected that Warren County, the number of households here will double in thirty years. I was shocked when I heard that. Double in thirty years. Thirty years used to seem like a long time to me. Thirty years doesn't seem like that long to me anymore. And so the reason I point that out is that that's, that's one of the needs we're trying to address. Obviously, this is a bigger development, but big numbers are needed when big numbers are coming at you like that. There's no doubt growth is here and growth, you know, is not going away for Warren County. So developments like this allow us to address housing needs, I believe, efficiently and effectively by using these different uses and planning for these different uses. You will not have residential growth without educational need, period. That's why the schools are involved. You will not have residential growth without commercial needs, period. Those things come along. They're ancillary to those homes that we've been rezoning and developing in this county. So that gets me really to the point. And that's the second point, is this development, under the second criteria, we believe it's compatible with the area. We believe it is, is not out of character. And the first thing I want to do, if I can go to, I'm probably going the wrong way. I always go the wrong way. I'm definitely going the wrong way. I'm trying to get to the density map. All right, so a few things I want to point out. We're not re-fluming, we're not asking to re-flume the entirety of the property, okay? Do we have the pointer? So the development that we're proposing eventually would include this parcel here, okay? And just like with the other applications tonight, you're not, if this flume's successful, you will not hear the rezoning tonight. That will come back at a later time. But we've gone ahead and we filed that, so when you look at compatibility, you've got some conditions you can compare, okay? So when we, if we, if this is successful and will we come back, this will be an RS-one-D single-family request. So you'll have the commercial frontage, as we are accustomed to seeing, the school component, the single-family component, and then the multifamily component. And one thing I want to point out, I want to make sure that when you're comparing these densities, we're comparing apples to apples, okay? Now, I want to say this. I understand why the staff left this parcel out. And I think the reason they did that here is because it's not part of your flume, okay? But when you look at the densities for Stewart Farms, that's actually the density average of both the multifamily and the single-family, okay? Whereas our calculation doesn't include our single-family. So I've done some math for you. If you looked at Stewart Farms and you only looked at the multifamily density, like what you have on our numbers today, the multifamily density in Stewart Farms is thirteen-point-four. That development is less than a mile away. The average for Stewart Farms is the number that's provided. Let me show you another development, and that is what I call the Tartar Development next to the school. And I believe it is right here. And the staff has provided you, that development has multifamily and single-family, and the staff has provided you a density of ten-point-oh-four. That's the combination of the two components. If you look only at the multifamily component of that development, that Tartar property's density is fourteen-point-three. So let's look at both of our components together. If you combine our residential numbers, or both our multifamily and single, like what you have here for Stewart Farms and what I'm calling the Tartar property, our average comes in at ten-point-three. And so it's important, I think, to compare apples to apples. If you're looking only at our multifamily number, we're lower than Stewart Farms. If you're looking at our combined, our combined numbers, we're lower than Tartar. In fact, on the multifamily only, we're lower than both of them. So I just, I just point that out. I think that's important. But when we talk about density, the staff has really used density and scale, okay? So I think I've talked about density enough. Let me talk a little about scale. So I was here in March, and in March, you all may recall, those of you that here, you had a, an application up on Nashville Road, up by the Parkway. It used to be a mobile home park. There's like a Bobcat dealership right there. That application was two, twenty-twenty-three oh-four flume. And they were re-fluming that property. And one of the arguments they made, and I never know why you guys and ladies vote the way you do, but one of the arguments that applicant made is that the multifamily buildings were a bigger scale, but they were in the back. And when you compared their size and scale to what was proposed in the front of that development, it was compatible. So in other words, they were, they argued scale within the development. And I think that's why the school is so important to point out here. That school's going to be roughly forty feet tall. It's going to sit in the front of those bigger buildings. I don't believe that the scaling between the multi-personly is out of whack between those multifamily buildings and that school that we believe will be built there. Just like the logic that was argued in March. I thought that was a good argument. I heard it at the time. I made note of it. And so I'd submit to you that the same holds true here.
Anything else, Chris?
I'm sorry it's taking so long, Chair Warren. Only thing I'll add is I understand that two adjoining landowners are here in support. I also know Mr. McIntyre, the Chief Financial Officer of Warren County Schools is here. He may or may not want to say something. I appreciate your host's time.
Thank you, Chris. So Commissioners, any women, Chris, before we sit down, and before you call any of your other witnesses here, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport that's not been addressed?
Chris, very quickly, you said the school is forty feet tall approximately.
Roughly. One of our conditions has a minimum and a maximum. I think it's, the minimum is thirty-five and the maximum is forty-five, off the top of my head, I believe is what we included.
All this building in your development would be approximately how tall?
I think about.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-five, the three stories?
So similar in height? Would that be a, would that be a fair statement?
I actually thought ours were taller than that, so with that number, ours' numbers would be smaller than the school.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Commissioners, any other questions? Excuse me. Don't mean to cut this off. Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, ma'am, or sir, or whoever, if you would come. Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
Nisa Wright, one-two-four-one-zero Nashville Road, Woodburn. Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Wright. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to go into the fact that the Merritt Harden House, the Historic Register House, is sort of the poster child of the rural area, that the whole character is going to be changed if this is, if this goes in. Now, I am assuming that eventually it will go in. I am hoping that it won't go in right now. One of the most important things is our infrastructure is not ready for this because the Woodburn Volunteer Fire Department, like all the other volunteer fire departments, they are having a hard time getting enough volunteers. And to add another five-hundred-plus units is going to put a great strain on them. They do not have ladders that will reach three stories, much less four stories for a school. This needs to be toned back a little. The, the part that I'm really against is that multi-unit that's three stories high. So anyway, that's all my.
Thank you very much. So we've heard about the historic home from Ms. Wright and the infrastructure, which I think the applicants can address, of the sewer that will be brought to that, and then the volunteer fire department. So, yes, ma'am. Yes, if you, something different, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Cassandra Hatcher Lashley.
Okay.
Ninety-five fourteen Three Springs Road. I swear to tell the truth. I agree with everything Monisa said. I believe that this flume is just too much too soon. We've had an influx of traffic with all the widening of the roads and whatnot coming out that direction. And that's to be expected with any development. But I would like to ask everyone who is in supportive of this, were you born and raised in Woodburn, Kentucky? Did you know Woodburn, Kentucky, back before all the development took place? Because I was. We had a community and a tight-knit community. And I feel that multifamily units disassociate us from each other. While a school coming in is a good idea, I do not feel that a school should be tied into a flume with a development property. I think it should be two separate issues altogether. However, I'm in opposition of all of it, all the way around. I know eventually it will be developed, and we'll deal with it then, but as it sits, I vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Lashley. Yes, something different other than the fire department, the historic home, infrastructure, traffic? Yes, sir, your name and address, please?
I'm Ron Ford. I live on Old Springfield Road in Woodburn, Kentucky. Some of you might know me, some of you might not. But I want to address this court. This is unimaginable, what you're even considering here. Do you know why, how long my family's lived in this county? Over two-hundred years. I live in Woodburn, Kentucky, because I love the country life. I don't want, and it's unimaginable that you want the taxpayer to build yet another school for one gentleman because he wants to put a bunch of houses and apartments to destroy our farmland. Let me ask you people this. What are you going to do one of these days when we have no more farmland? Where are you going to get your food? You think green beans just grow off the trees? They do not. For every house and apartment that you allow to be built in this county, it is time for Warren County to stay enough. There's a way to stop this, and we've had enough. How is it that one attorney and one gentleman can say, oh, we think we need another forty thousand houses in this county? Warren County is not that big. And it is time that Warren County started managing the growth of this county instead of just letting all these people with all kinds of money just come out south and destroy my farmland and encroach on me and my country living. You know one of the best things that I can do every morning? I can sit on my front or my back porch. I can look next door to the black Angus cows. I can look across the cornfields. And you know the best smell in this entire county? You people can laugh, and that's fine, because I was born in a farm. The best thing you can do is smell cow manure and fresh-cut hay. I love that smell. Now, you people might not be from the country, but I am. And it's a travesty to do the south end of this county, to put it on the taxpayer yet again. He wants to build a big subdivision? Go somewhere else. Don't put it on me where I'm, me, the taxpayer. Look at your tax bill. The most of your property taxes go to our school system already. But yet, we're going to build another school to satisfy one gentleman? I think not.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So, appreciate everybody's comments. Is there, is there anyone else tonight that has a question that is totally different than what's been brought up here? We've talked about traffic, school, infrastructure, the historic house. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Lauren Nickel. I live at seven-two-nine Collet Road. I swear to tell the truth.
Okay.
I just want to address you guys. I'm twenty-seven years old. I was born in Woodburn, Kentucky, and it's where I was raised, you know? And I have been here, you know, since then. I got a wild hair and I moved to Nashville one time. And I feel like that's what Bowling Green is trying to grow toward, and I tell you, it's not it. I lived in Nashville. I was harassed by people on drugs. I was harassed by homeless people.
Yes, ma'am. But what's this got to do with this, I mean, Nashville?
It has to do about the growth. So it doesn't fit in. This is prime agricultural real estate.
Okay.
We've covered that, but once you build buildings on it, you leach the nutrients from the ground. You can never get it back. And, you know, I'm also a medical laboratory scientist. I work at a hospital here in Bowling Green, and I work in one in Nashville. I can ensure you that we cannot take care of all these people. We just can't. And I also want to encourage anyone from Warren County Public Schools, how about we improve our other schools that are less desirable before we build another one? We have North Warren. It sits almost vacant. And we have so much land up north where all these factories, everyone's, everyone wants to use the battery factory as an excuse for all this growth, but why are the houses not going up there toward it? I assure you, they want to live close to work. So I just, I, I hope that you guys oppose this, and I hope that you guys encourage Mr. Chandler to take his money north, because South Warren County residents don't want this.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, we will listen to everybody here tonight, but we've heard a lot of great comments. Is there anything else that anybody wants to share that has been totally different than what we've talked about tonight?
Charlotte Samms, twenty-six-eighty-five Woodburn Allen Springs Road, live South Warren County. I grew up in Bowling Green, close to the inner city. There was a lot of poor people, a lot of crime. I lived in a hut housing. When I got married, I moved to South Warren County. And it's open space, but let me tell you, you all don't want this growth. You don't want this hardship that it's going to bring, the crime, the alcoholism, the people. And, you know, I moved away because I don't want that density around me. I want wide-open spaces, and we should have that choice.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've heard about growth. We've heard about Nashville. We've heard about, and we want to hear everybody, but.
One quick thing, Kathy Ford. I'm Ron's wife. I agree with everything he said. Sixteen-thirty-seven Old Springfield Road. But regarding infrastructure, this last year, when we had peak periods of electric usage in the extreme cold, Warren RECC had rolling blackouts because they could not support the electric usage. Are they prepared to take this on? It started in Woodburn, and we experienced, you know, hours, I guess it would have been days had there been a catastrophe, but it was just hours of rolling blackouts from area to area in the south end of the county. So that's one more thing to take under consideration. We don't need this.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else that has a question or an opposition to this tonight? If it's something different, I think we've heard a lot of opposition, and we're glad to hear it, but something different?
I have another question.
Yeah, just, just a minute. Just let me use the microphone.
My name is Stacy Meadows. I live at nine-eight-seven-seven Nashville Road, directly across the road from this. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Our main issue is trash pickup, mail. This is the first meeting we have known about. We've not gotten anything in the mail. Our magistrate contacted us. Our mail's sporadic, trash pickup's sporadic. We went a whole week, no trash pickup. Republic, we'll get to you. We'll get to you. I noticed Scott waste trash cans on our road that go days. They miss pickup day. We're not getting our services. Our internet is crappy. You're going to add five-hundred more homes, and we're not getting services, and there's not that many of us right now. I mean, I live directly across the road from this. We moved two years ago from the city, from a HOA neighborhood that you guys approved that flooded. We were trapped. We were trapped to the country for peace, quiet, to get away from everyone. We run a business, we have a shop at our home. You're gonna add five hundred people across the road from us that already, you've mentioned traffic, that's two lanes right there. The expansion is not even ready to go, cuz I've asked about that. When are you guys coming to talk to us about the road expansion? We wanna know how much you're taking. We haven't gotten that far. So you're gonna add all this extra traffic. Both fire departments on either side of us are volunteer fire departments. Daily, all day, up and down my road, constantly. We got Franklin traffic, ambulance is coming in, everywhere. We don't want Nashville. We don't want all the extra people when we're not being serviced as it is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've heard all the different comments and appreciate everybody's comments tonight. We're not trying to cut anybody off. Fire department, infrastructure, agriculture, schools, and everything else. If there's somebody else that has something different, we would be glad to hear that tonight.
I just have a question.
Is it something different?
It's regarding the infrastructure, but is it something that hasn't been addressed?
Okay, yes ma'am, one more time. Okay. We're not trying to cut you short. We've got a lot of other, a lot of other cases tonight.
If it wasn't this location, I would be at home and be just oblivious. Anyways, my question for y'all is, have you received any kind of reports regarding how the roadway system and the Department of Transportation is going to help us solve this issue with the influx of animal deaths?
Of what?
On thirty-one W Nashville Road?
Of what kind of deaths?
Animal deaths. Due to the road expansion? Has there been any talks about doing animal bridges across? I know we have the one going in at Chady's, which is gonna be a walk under the highway. But that's the only thing I've ever heard about trying to prevent these travesties from happening. Because as time progresses, as we go forward from here, there's gonna be less and less farmland for these animals to live. And it's gonna be a real problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, staff, do y'all have any? I think we've heard enough comments. Do y'all have any other comments? Sir, is there something different?
Yes.
Okay, one more, one more, one more person, then we're gonna, we're gonna. All right, come up here to the microphone.
Terry Chapin, eighty-five forty-six Three Springs Road.
Okay.
And I swear to tell the truth. My big concern is, I farm. You know, we talk about traffic, we talk about cars and trucks. It's farm machinery transportation. The farm implement companies are big, building them bigger and bigger all the time. It's getting very difficult. I was in a situation at the crossroads of two forty and thirty-one W just last fall. Mr. Balance back here was bringing his machinery in. They've got large stuff. It's total chaos. I think South Warren High School was probably letting out about the same time. It was a, it was a dangerous situation. And the other thing, if you look at your map, you're talking about the multifamily dwellings on the backside. Mason Farms, my brother-in-law is just on the other side of that. Triple Oak Farms is on the south side. We use restricted-use pesticides all the time. And that is an exposure there. If you're talking about bringing schools and kids and multifamilies and stuff like that, that is a hazard in the area. And we do our best to control it, but just let that be there.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So thank you for all your comments tonight. And applicants, do you have anything else you would like to add before we call for a motion, please? Just make it, make it quick.
Remind everyone that when we come back, if this is successful, there will be a traffic impact study. We will have to do that. There will also be a traffic study done by the Department of Education, even outside what we normally do. So that was mentioned earlier, just wanna remind you of that.
I have a question.
Yeah, Chris.
All right, now we have commissioners' questions for Mr. Davenport?
The Merritt Harden home hasn't been addressed.
That will be addressed at the zoning also. So that's one of those conditions that they brought up that would be part of the zoning, not necessarily the flume.
Flume, correct. Mr. Volker?
I just wanna, I just wanna make a comment. I think somebody maybe made the statement or comment that Warren County Schools is building a school for this, for this one man, building a school for this one man and this one development. I don't think that's the case. I think we have it. And I, we're here every other Thursday. And there's people who get up every other Thursday and talk about, you know, they don't want the growth and they don't want anything built by them. And I understand and I appreciate it. But Warren County's not gonna stop. And Warren County is the fastest-growing county and city in the state of Kentucky. And I understand that that doesn't sit well with everybody, but it is a fact. And that's why, you know, when we sit and listen to these applications, there's times that we do have to make decisions and it's not favorable with everybody out there. But I think that's why the sewer and the parks and things are being built out South Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Okay, so I think we've heard great comments on this. So commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty-two-three-oh-seven flume. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU-one-one-four in the comprehensive plan. Further, our request is motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Casada?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel?
Ho.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion's approved by planning, zoning, final action. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-three-oh-eight flume. Sweeney Properties LLC, care of Rappelish Patel.
Chair, you can't give a stupid, never one of you are.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Thanks.
Find the door.
Find the door. Okay, here we go. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-three-oh-eight flume. Sweeney Properties LLC, care of Rappelish Patel, has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of land containing approximately four-point-four-nine acres located one-one-nine-one-nine-nine Sweeney Lane for mixed-use residential to commercial. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. And just to note, you should have a revised set of development plan conditions we received this afternoon at your receipts. I believe the changes are highlighted for your reference. We did have a pre-application meeting back in December for this property located on Sweeney Lane. And the applicants are proposing to amend the future land use map from mixed-use residential to commercial. And if the amendment is successful, they would later like to apply to rezone the property to highway business in order to subdivide the property into two commercial lots for a multi-tenant building and then a recreational building to the rear. Looking at the current zoning, you'll see that it is agriculture with a current use of single-family and vacant. And as I mentioned, the current future land use designation is mixed-use residential. So if you look at the bottom of page one, we have provided a recommendation for denial pending public hearing testimony and discussion of a few items. The first is that the staff found the proposed flume amendment generally not in agreement with LU-one-point-one-point-four and not compatible with the surrounding area. The applicants have not provided documentation regarding the capacity of the existing infrastructure, including water, sewer, and stormwater, although the proposed DPCs do require that Sweeney Lane be widened to the specifications of the applicable Public Works Department. There are a few items under the third bullet point that have been addressed with the revised development plan conditions. But we still have considerations relating to the required parking. So that is on page four. Let's see here, let me get to the right spot. Okay, so the site data that is listed on the zone change exhibit only includes the required parking for the multi-use building and the office portion of the community center building. Staff requested that the applicants confirm the maximum fire-rated capacity for the twelve-thousand-square-foot of recreation area. However, this was left unaddressed. Based on the provided parking, the maximum capacity could not exceed four-hundred-and-four people to meet the parking requirements. We have also noted a consideration for sink holes. I think the issue is that the previous proposed development plan condition referenced the city of Bowling Green. I guess there's still no confirmation from the applicant as to whether or not this property would remain in the county or if it would be annexed into the city of Bowling Green. I think it's okay either way, but the new development plan conditions, number ten may still need to be amended to reference either entity depending on where the property ultimately ends up, whether that be in the city or in the county. Let's see here. Next, hours of operation on page five. Looking at the surrounding land uses. Uses fronting Sweeney Lane east of the existing manufactured home dealership. Let me go to the land use map here. You can see that those are all agricultural and single-family residential uses. For this reason, the staff suggested that the applicants consider revising their proposed hours of operation. The original proposed hours of operation were six AM to twelve AM on weekdays and six AM to two AM on weekends. On page four, you'll see that their recent amendment to that proposed development plan condition is now from six AM to eleven PM on weekdays and six AM to one AM on weekends. Staff found that none of the nearby businesses are open this late. According to the website, the Menomark closes at eleven PM. Other nearby businesses close between four-thirty PM and six PM. And then again, the applicants did agree to revise the hours, but they only, I think, shaved off an hour from the original proposal, from the closing time.
Rachel, let me just ask you real quick, did y'all suggest hours?
No, we just pointed out the hours for the surrounding businesses, yes. And then, let's see, proposed building size, that's gonna be under the surrounding architectural features on page five. Building sizes for properties along Russellville Road in this area between I-one-sixty-five and Wall Valley Way and Locust Lane range from nine-hundred-and-ninety square feet to ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty square feet with a minimum building size of thirty-six-hundred square feet and an average of forty-two-fourteen. The applicants are proposing to construct one ten-thousand-square-foot multi-tenant building closer to Russellville Road and a twenty-thousand-square-foot recreational building to the rear. The twenty-thousand-square-foot building size is nearly double the size of the largest existing commercial structure in the vicinity. And it's over five-and-a-half times the median building size for the area and is not consistent with the established building sizes for the area. And then the last point, I think, should then be on building orientation. And that is on page six. Many of the buildings in the area are oriented to face public streets. Staff suggested that the applicants include a requirement that the building nearest Russellville Road should be oriented to face Russellville Road and that the rear building should be oriented to face Sweeney Lane. The applicants only address building orientation for the building closest to Russellville Road and is proposing that such building face Sweeney Lane. Since Sweeney Lane runs along the northern, or sorry, the southern and eastern frontage of the proposed development, this means that the building nearest Russellville Road does not have to face Russellville Road. So with that, I believe I'm finished with the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Rachel, I just have a question. These development plan conditions that were laying at our desk, when were they submitted?
This afternoon.
So just this afternoon?
Yes.
And they've had since December the seventh to address these?
Well, that's when we met initially in our pre-application meeting. I guess I had sent further correspondence, would've been, let me find the date of the email.
But really, we're just doing the flume, right?
Yes.
It was May second was when we provided our correspondence after they had actually made the application. But we did review several of these topics during the pre-application meeting, yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll reserve my comments.
I know what, I know where you're going and I agree. It's, but, you know, I think it goes back to what we talked about on a couple earlier ones.
Pull your mic down.
I guess we're really not getting into those tonight. I guess it's just an outlier.
I guess where I'm coming from, just as a commissioner, is that, you know, we have guidelines and then we receive something on the night of the hearing, which should've been addressed a long time ago. And that's my frustration. So I'll just say what I'm gonna say. Would those changes that we've received that are on our desk now, would that have changed the recommendation from staff?
I don't believe it would. Because really, the, some of the things that were fixed today were really just housekeeping things. But some of the other issues that we still have for your consideration, such as the hours of operation, the proposed building size, and the building orientation are still concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Has there been any, Rachel, has there been any other discussion regarding scaling back the buildings as far as size?
No, sir, we discussed that in the pre-application meeting. It was our recommendation that they just apply for the general business zoning because that would've complied with the future land use map and maybe potentially being able to split up that space into multiple structures. But ultimately, the applicants chose to file this application because they are desiring that larger building in the rear.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Is the applicant here or their representative?
Chair Warren, Chris Davenport, still swear to tell the truth. Let me first of all, address a few things. Let me, let me start where I'm gonna end. The, my opinion, the most important part about this application is the twenty-thousand-square-foot building in the back. That's what requires a flume change. You're looking at two buildings. The first building being no more than ten-thousand square feet would be allowed in general business. General business is generally compatible with mixed-use residential. So we would not need a flume change on the first, that front parcel. It's the second parcel that brings us here tonight. With regard to these changes, it doesn't make much difference. But I sent those about eight-thirty this morning, okay? Rachel may not have seen them till this afternoon, cuz I know she was in training, to be fair to Rachel. The way this process works, and we've talked about this in the past, but I do want to just say this. The staff, in the last few months, we've been changing how we, how we do some of this. And the reports that we got this cycle were a little different, but frankly, they're a lot more in-depth. There's a lot more to them. So some of the things that we missed with my client were, for instance, we prohibited split-faced block as a foundation. They wanted to make sure that we don't consider that a modern masonry material. So one of the revisions they got today is, there's no intention to put any type of block on these buildings. Now, with that being said, the issue here is that back building, no doubt about it. And my clients, their intention for this property is to have a multi-use, like an event center in the back. I do think there's a precedent for that in the area. The staff, when they, when they told, when they commented on the buildings in the area, there's a reference that they consider between the Parkway to the Walnut Valley or the Locust Lane. And if I can find that on the map here, that intersection that they're talking about is right here. So what the staff used for comparison purposes were basically these frontage lots. According to the GIS map, the distance between our property and that intersection is point-two-two miles. So what I did in preparation for tonight was I, I looked a little broader than that. And the engineer on this project is Thad Lucas. And what he has basically used as his guide, and I don't know if I can go out far enough, Rachel or Ben, I'm looking for Blue Level Road. Yeah, right here. So on Blue Level Road, in the last couple of years, there was a zone change that the Islamic Center included a multi-use facility. Has a gym in it, it's got meeting rooms. It's basically exactly what my client wants to do on this track, on the back track. By car, that Blue Level Road property is about point-eight miles away, or point-seven. As the crow flies, it's about point-six. So what I'm suggesting to you is, if you consider that to be your radius, you've got a basically identical building that far away. Now, the staff didn't, the staff considered to that intersection. So the hope is, and the staff did discuss this. At one time, there was a concept plan that had a ten-thousand-square-foot building in the back. And when I talked to my client, that's not big enough to provide the space that they want, the gym and the meeting rooms and those things. So, uh, that's, that's the, the cause for the, uh, flume change request tonight. Let me see if there are any notes I wanted to point out. I, I will say this, if it is successful and we come back on a zoning, you will also get a condition that orients the front, the, the, the condition that says that this building's gonna be oriented to Sweeney Lane is an error. You would get, if we come back, a condition that the front building of ten thousand square feet will be oriented to Russellville. This building will be oriented to Sweeney Lane. Um, and again, this would be the bigger building in the back. So, much like, much like I told you all a few minutes ago, I do believe it's preferable, if you're gonna have a bigger building, to have it in the back. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Any other questions for, uh, the applicant's attorney?
So, Chris, it looks like you, you're gonna be able to address most of these, um, except the size of the building, if I, if I-
Can't change that.
Okay, so that's just a-
That's it. Uh, you know, I, I, I meant to mention earlier, as far as the infrastructure, the staff notes from this project provided us the water pressure. Um, if I can go to that pre-app, it is, um, I think it's six hundred gallons a minute at twenty square foot of pressure. Uh, Thad tells me that is sufficient in the county for this use. And so, the, one of the questions in the, in the staff report was, will we be seeking an annexation? And I can tell you, we will not. 'Cause I understand it, and maybe Ben, if you need, can speak to this, but the water requirements in the city are higher than in the county. So, at that, at that level, we meet the, the requirements of the county, that's why we wanna stay in the county.
So, so I guess my next question is for staff. Um, i- i- if those other items were addressed, and he seems to be, uh, prepared to address them, uh, is it, is it primarily the size of that structure that, that still gives us the, the denial recommendation? Okay, alright, very good.
Building size and hours of operation.
But the hours of operation can be, we can fix that if we want to in, in the next, in the zone change.
It's strictly a DPC issue. And again, the twenty thousand square foot means we have to have highway business, and that's what triggers the commercial flume. It all flows from the size of that building.
So, um, this is just a naive question. If he had two ten thousand square foot buildings, would we have the same issue? But it's, it won't work.
Won't work for the use they want in the back.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, please come to microphone and, uh, state your name and address, please. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Alice Howard, seven-seven-five Sweeney Lane. I'm at the very end of Sweeney Lane. It, Sweeney Lane dead ends and actually ends on our property. Um, I'm also speaking for, um, my mother, who is housebound and cannot be here tonight. Uh, she owns the additional property at the same house number. Um, the infrastructure, there may be water pressure at that property, but Sweeney Lane goes uphill. So, I'm at the other end, and our water pressure goes drastically down. And so, as development has come out Sweeney Lane, um, I've been there for over twenty years. So, our water pressure has drastically decreased. Um, and I'm on a farm, um, and my mother has another line that's for farm use. It has been turned off, but we can turn it back on at any time, because when my father passed away, the cattle, we removed the cattle. Um, so, when, if something like that goes in, um, I probably won't have any water pressure. Uh, with the additional houses that have come out, the water pressure has gone down. Something that that also does not show is Sweeney Lane is at the, uh, right, it curves back and kinda goes around where the off-ramp for I-one-sixty-five comes in. Um, at Russellville Road, it is wide enough for two cars to pass. But as you go on back and up the side of this property, it is a one-lane road. And in some places, it's barely room enough for one car. There is a guardrail along that side of the property, and it is quite steep. Um, one car can, is all that can go through there. Um, it is quite dangerous when you meet the school bus, the garbage truck, uh, delivery, or the mail. Two cars cannot pass, um, especially through the guardrail, and the guardrail's quite long. Uh, this was also an issue, uh, some time ago, when at this very same property, King of Cars, there was a car lot that wanted to go in. They were, this, it wasn't this exact board, but the same board denied King of Cars to go in. They subsequently chose a different spot, even though they had purchased this. Uh, they rented out, there is a brick house in the front part of this lot that is being rented out. There was another house in the back part, it burnt. Um, and that back part totally floods, and it floods drastically. Um, it, it floods all the way back up to the front part in, into the garage of the current brick home and into the back of that home. It has always flooded, it's flooded there for over thirty years. It looks like a stream through there. The water that comes off of the off-ramp of I-sixty-five goes through there. There's a big, uh, ditch, it, it floods heavily. So, that needs to be something that the new developer or owner takes into consideration.
Ms. Howard, you got about thirty, twenty more seconds, okay?
But, um, all of us, we have trouble getting in and out. There is no turn lane on Russellville Road. Um, the, the mobile home lot and the business across the way, we have trouble getting in and out. We have to go all the way down and turn around at the hucks to get out and come towards town. So, these are things that need to be taken into consideration if you allow this.
Thank you so much for your comments. Uh, yes, something different other than traffic, uh, the guardrail, Sweeney Lane, the water pressure? Yes, sir, something different?
Michael Clayton, four-ninety-one Sweeney Lane.
Yes, sir.
Swear to-
Clay?
Michael Clayton.
Clayton, no worry.
Uh, my biggest concern is fire protection. Um, as of February of twenty-twenty-two, we have been out of code of fire protection on our road. Planning and zoning knows it, they haven't done anything about it. Um, actually, it was done before that, but I know that date. We are not up to code to fire protection. So, you're adding more stuff to Sweeney Lane, and we're not gonna have the, the manpower or the fire protection in place. Uh, we're running a four-inch line and should be a six-inch line, and they've never done nothing about it. So, that's one of the biggest concerns, and like she said, traffic.
Alright.
Uh, there's school, three school buses that travel that road twice a day, every day, that they're in session. And turning left out of there is, you, you almost gotta go right. And I haven't heard of a traffic study done, you know, what, how much more traffic it's gonna impose. I've sat there five minutes trying to turn left out of there. And you're adding more businesses, more cars. You know, if I'm gonna wait five minutes and there's two cars in front of me, I'm gonna be there fifteen minutes trying to turn. You know, but the fire protection, uh, I'm, Ben knows what I'm talking about, it's inadequate. It's not up to code. And I just can't see adding more stuff to us on that road when we're not up to code as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Yes, sir, appreciate your comments. Anything else other than the fire protection, the traffic, uh, something different? Okay.
Um, my name's Nina Howard, I live at seven-twenty East Thirteenth Avenue, but I have lived on seven-seven-five Sweeney Lane since I was a little kid. Um, I go there every day, all the time of the week, to see my parents and stuff. And that road is severely needs repavement. There are potholes that you have to avoid, and if somebody's trying to exit when you're coming in, you have to get completely off of the road, or you have to speed up and get around the pothole to get off the road to get through there. It's just, it's severely potholed and needs repair. And up at my, where it does end at the road, there's a huge sinkhole. And the county has not come to fix where the pavement is literally crumbling into the sinkhole, and eventually, there will be no road.
Alright.
And the county has not addressed it. There are also logs that are in the middle of the road. The ca- the county has known, the county has said that they would come and pick it up. It's been more than two months, and they have not come and pick it up.
Alright, th- thank, thank you so much, Ms. Howard. Alright, thank you very much for your comments. Anything, no, no, some, something different, come on.
Yeah, it is. You were talking about, and then I wanna address this, and it's just a question to you all. You were talking about Warren County's growth. I know, it's grown, you know, unbelievably. But I haven't never heard anybody in here talk about what we're gonna do for the infrastructure. I mean, we've outgrown our fire department, we've outgrown our police department. I mean, look, you know, I drive around, I'm a realtor too, so I'm on the road all the time. And I'm one of them school buses that travel that road. Sit at a traffic light once, sit at a stop sign, people don't stop. People's in a hurry, there's, but our police force, we've outgrown our streets, we've outgrown everything, but I've never heard anybody talk about-
And I, I, I appreciate the question. That, that is not something we take up.
Yeah.
So, that is, that, that's the Kentucky transportation, I mean, so, and so, and so, and so, I think it was said, so when-
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, let Bowling Green continue to grow, that's great.
Okay.
But, you know, that infrastructure, they're gonna have to try to stay ahead of it.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else, different comments tonight, or questions? Does the applicant have one more comment they'd like to make very briefly?
Yes, sir. Uh, on the issue of the fire protection, one of those latest DPCs, uh, that were highlighted requires a developer to coordinate hydrant placement and number of hydrants with the fire department. So, that may actually help some of the situation that the gentleman's addressing. I can tell you for sure that the, that the folks that talked about the, the quality of Sweeney Lane should be happy to know that if this passes, one of our DPCs requires widening of Sweeney Lane to the farthest ex, this furthest point. So, if this were to pass, if the flume passes and, and we get the zoning change, one of the requirements are two access points. The county did not want us using just one, they want two, and we would be required to widen Sweeney Lane to that second point. Now, it won't help further out, I understand that, but it will help up to the point of that access point.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, commissioners, you've heard the public comments, you've heard the applicants. Uh, would call for a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to deny the, uh, proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty-two-three-zero-eight flume. Based upon the testimony documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has not met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU-one-point-one-point-four in the comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
There are motion, a second to deny?
A second.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes means no.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the motion is to deny. If you're in favor of denial, you will vote yes. If you're in favor of approval, you'll vote no.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
No.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker? Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie?
No.
Commissioner Drain? And Chair Warren?
Yes.
Six votes no, and four votes yes. So, the, um, motion to deny, uh, fails. You've taken no action.
S- so, do we need an approval motion?
Yes, I think you should consider making a motion to approve and see if it carries, so that you can take action.
Ian, can I, can I make a comment before a motion's called?
Uh, yes, sir.
I think the reason that I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest this motion and, and call for the motion is if there'd been two ten thousand foot buildings, we would've passed it, or it wouldn't have come here. So, that, I just wanna make, I make the motion to approve the proposed, uh, future land use map amendment, docket number twenty-two-three-zero-eight flume. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoom, uh, shoot, flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU-one-one-four in the com- comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve is, the motion is to approve, a yes vote will be in favor of approval. And I'm sorry, I interrupted them.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Casada?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel? Commissioner Ritchie? Commissioner Drain? Commissioner Graham?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
No. So, the motion has, has approved, and, uh, planning, zoning, final action. Okay, thank you all. Our next item tonight? Our next item tonight is twenty-two-three, uh, twenty-one ZPS, Jim Durant, applicant, and K.M. Ellis, and Ken A. Marshall, Jr., property owners, have filed an application to rezone approximately three-point-five acres located zero North Gra- North Graham Street from RS, RS-one-A, single-family resi- residential, to RS-one-D, single-family residential with the general development plan. And this will be, uh, the four county commissioners and the one Plum Springs representative voting on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
We had a pre-application meeting on December the second of twenty-twenty-two for the property that you mentioned, and then it's highlighted in yellow. Uh, the current zoning is RS-one-A. The current land use is vacant, uh, and the, uh, future land use is moderate-density residential. Uh, again, the applicants are proposing to rezone, um, from RS-one-A to RS-one-D in order to subdivide the property into two lots. Uh, and there is a site plan located on page six for your reference, and I will go back to that. Uh, I think that's mostly it. Um, so, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Uh, therefore, uh, staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing testimony and a discussion of the following. Uh, staff has noted considerations relating to utility placement, and that can be found in the surrounding architectural features, uh, on page two, but the utility placement is actually, uh, on top of page three there, if you're looking to, to review. Uh, utility lines are underground in the Plum Grove subdivision. Service utility lines are mainly located, uh, to the rear of the structures for properties along North Graham Street. Uh, the applicants did not address utility placement as suggested by staff. But that are all, that is all the, the comments we have for, uh, kinda points to consider, and be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, commissioners, the, the question is utility placements. That, that is your all's question for the applicants tonight. Uh, commissioners, any questions? Is the applicant here or their representative? If one of you would've come to the microphone, please? Yes, sir, your name and address, please?
Marshall, eight-one-two Plum Springs Loop.
Plum Springs Loop.
Jim Durant, two-zero-six-seven Chesapeake Drive.
You gentlemen swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Yes. So, you've heard our staff report, and I think there's a question about the utility placement?
Uh, we'll defer to, he's a smart guy.
Still try, still, still am gonna tell the truth, like-
Still, still, still am going to tell the truth, like Chris says. I guess I just did not see these, that this was a requirement of the flume change, and I apologize for that, but there is also a water main at this location, and it'll be adequate to serve one additional home. And then, as far as the sewer goes, a, a big part of the reason they're wanting to ask for two lots instead of the one they already have is sewer's not available on the property. And so they're going to have to extend that as part of this project. And it's, uh, I should have looked up the exact linear foot footage of that, but it's on that other side, where's the pointer here? Sewer is, it's like, right here. So they're going to install a sewer line from here down to here, or else they would have to put a septic tank on that lot, and, uh, which would require a variance to put that septic system in. And so, the want is to, you know, install the house on sewer, so.
So.
Hopefully that addresses the.
And the electric lines. Will, will they be above ground?
I would say new electric lines would be below.
That was, that was our consideration.
I understand, I missed that.
Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, yeah, any new utility lines would be installed underground.
So I assume you've looked at this, that's not a force main, that's a gravity field.
It is a gravity, yes, sir.
Okay, so they can, all right, very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, just, just a minute. Do, uh, you gentlemen have, Mr. Durant, Mr. Marshall, you've heard what you all, your engineer has agreed to about the sewer line, and the utilities would be underground? Do you all agree to that?
Thank, have you got a DPC to read to them, is that what you're working on?
Yeah, so you, this will be DPC number, that suits everybody? They've answered yes, you all agree to, to install any new utilities underground?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicants tonight?
I, I just have one. What is the timeframe maybe on the development, if you could share that? Just roughly?
To get started by the end of this year, before, before winter time.
Thank you.
I want to look at, uh, DPC 4, and I've not done one of these in a minute, but we've been, we changed the way we were doing the percentages to require masonry materials on the entire front facade that faces the public streets, right? Is that what we were doing?
Well, if, if, part of that, uh, if, if you're asking me.
I, I was asking, I was looking at you, but yeah.
It's been a compatibility issue that we've been trying to address. So sometimes we address it for the entire structure, and then sometimes we address it for, just for the front elevation, because that's sometimes more manageable.
Right, and that area is mixed materials, it would fit in with the neighborhood, I think, if we could just commit to the front, if y'all would be willing to do that. Okay. So amend DPC 4 to 50% non-vinyl material, or modern masonry materials, I think is what we've been saying, and then 100% of the front facade minus soffits and whatnot. So I'm good with that, then.
Is that the way it currently reads, or is that to change?
It'd be an amendment to it.
Would be an amendment.
Yeah, it would need to change based on the discussion, because right now it just says that the exterior of any new residence would be at least 50% non-vinyl, but there's not a restriction on the placement of the non-vinyl.
Right.
Okay, so I, I think I can clarify here.
So in theory, it could be all on the rear facade, which is not likely, but.
Uh, good catch, I didn't, I didn't catch that. So really what we're asking, and I know, I know this is your intent, your, your modern masonry materials, we want to dress up the front facade and make sure that those materials are not used on the back. So, uh, are, do you have an objection to us changing the location? You're doing essentially the same thing, but we're just going to specify that those modern masonry materials would be on the front facade?
Yes, that would be correct.
Hamp, do you want to, uh, read that back and just let them agree to it?
So, the second sentence of DPC number four, I guess, is what it would imply.
Right.
One exterior of any new residence shall be comprised of, and that's going to be 100% non-vinyl materials?
Let's say modern masonry.
Modern masonry materials, yeah.
Or masonry.
Excluding soffits and, to give them that flexibility, but yeah. 50% of the, of the structure, 100% of the front facing the, the street.
It's, the net is the same, if you had already had 50%.
And I'm sure that's what y'all were planning to do, too.
We're just moving it to the front, so that you, you basically do the front facade out of masonry materials, and the rest you can, you can go ahead and incorporate the, the vinyl materials, and it does exclude your soffits.
Mr. Mr. Marshall, Mr. Drain, are you all agreeable with that?
We are.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've got nothing else.
Commissioners, before you all sit down, any other questions regarding this? Thank you all very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we call for a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with, contingent upon the general development plan, docket number 2023-21ZPS. Based upon the testimony, documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 30, 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
And Commissioner Drain?
The motion is approved, and we'll go to the Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is 2023-31ZBG, West Haven Properties LLC, care of Wayne Vincent, has filed an application to rezone approximately 42.9 acres located zero and 4917 Russellville Road from PUD, Plan Unit Development, to General Business, RM3 Townhouse, multi-family residential, and RS1, single-family residential with a general development plan. Amy?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on March the 16th for the properties that you mentioned, and then are highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is a PUD, which is a Plan Unit Development. Current land use is agriculture, single-family residential, and vacant. And the future land use is mixed-use residential and mixed-use commercial. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone from PUD to General Business, RM3, which is multi-family residential, and RS1D, which is a single-family residential district, in order to develop the properties with a maximum of 440 multi-family residential units, 130 single-family residential units, and a mixture of commercial uses. And there is a site plan on page 12 of your packet for you to review. Looking at the development history, all portions of the properties were rezoned to a PUD in 2007 and 2008. And then looking down at the bottom of the page, the proposal complies with majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion of a couple of items. Staff has noted considerations relating to loss of prime farmland and residential amenities. So looking over the prime farmland, which I believe is actually on page three, a large portion of the properties are designated as prime farmland, with the rest designated as prime land, as farmland of statewide importance. And then looking at the residential amenities, which is on page four, the proposed open space, applicants agreed in DPC number two. For the RM3 portion, the development will contain a minimum of 30% open space. DPC number two also requires the development shall include internal sidewalks that will connect the parking areas and buildings. And then internal sidewalks will connect with public streets. There is no requirement in the DPCs that the applicants provide any residential amenities for the site, such as a pool, clubhouse, dog park, grilling areas, fitness center, et cetera. The applicants are proposing 12% open space in the RS1D portion of the development to include sidewalks on both sides of the streets. That is all we have for staff report, be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
What was available on the pod?
Do you remember, Rachel?
Residential amenities?
Yeah, was there any?
Was there, was there any multi-family in the pod?
Uh, there was a mix of townhomes, I think. I don't, I can't remember. I think it was just townhomes.
Okay. That's fine.
Any other questions, commissioners, I'm sorry. Thank you, Amy. Is the applicant here, or their representative, any comments they'd like to make?
Yes, Mr. Chairman Kevin Brooks, 1010 College Street, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I represent the applicant who is here, and our engineer is here, but I don't have a speech to make. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Any of us would answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brooks? Hang on, Kevin. Any, any questions? All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question about this proposal or opposition? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please?
Diane Berkeley Martin. We live at 727 Memphis Junction Road, and I swear to tell the whole truth.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have several concerns. We've known about this proposed, proposed development for quite a while. Uh, we were under the impression that it was going to be much less dense. The area in that whole Memphis Junction is single-family homes. Um, we, of course, are agricultural to the east of this development. Um, and when this proposal came out for 500 units, we were a little bit floored. Um, the houses on the front part of that are all single homes, and the development behind that to the south are also all single-family homes. We don't, I'm not in opposition to the development. We knew it was going to happen. Um, that area is a very nice, single-family home area. But to have 500 units and to not have, um, there's actually, the road does not even, is not shown, but we know that the road is going to go straight out to Memphis Junction Road, which right now already has a lot of issues with traffic. So I know it's not on the proposal, but it is, they've already put flags up for where you're going to dig. It's there. Um, so we know that we're going to be faced with, you know, if you have 500 homes, you're going to have 500 cars trying to get out of that area on a small residential road, which we're already battling semis that aren't supposed to be on that road also. We also are very concerned because we do not see a water retention area, um, and the, our farm, which is, and I don't even know what that little area is there. I have a question about that, too. We already have a water runoff issue because of the church, which is all blacktopped around it, and so we get a lot of the runoff on our farm from that. And if that back area is also going to be all commercial, then we're concerned that that will create even more water runoff for that. So water retention, traffic, and the high density in the middle of a lot of single home units is a concern for us in that area. And I know there's not a lot of us here to oppose, but we have 110 acres next to it, so there's not a lot of people that live on 110 acres, and we like it that way. So, can you answer that question? What is that little? In the back? Yeah, over that's next to the Elman property. Far right. Far right and the bottom. Yes, we can answer that. What is it?
Hey Kevin, come up to the microphone.
That has transmission lines over it.
Okay.
That has transmission lines over it. I don't know how you're going to build there.
So Kevin, if we're going to respond individually, why don't you also have your engineer address the retention as well?
Okay.
Okay.
Obviously, we've not engineered our stormwater, but we've obviously considered, you know, how it might work out. The, the part in the back, ma'am, that you're asking out about, it will be single-family. And I would just point out to the commission, kind of briefly, obviously, uh, we've consulted with the county and the state on, on our traffic, and, and the road improvements will be what they require that there be. They really didn't require a whole lot of us, but we wouldn't be here without that. And I just want to say that, one thing that we have done, which I think is important, is the way we've transitioned this. We didn't, we didn't try to put all duplexes in there. You know, we've got single-family in the back, which transitions from adjacent single-family, and then a little bit more dense as we come forward, and the most dense up front where we're next to commercial stuff. And.
Cameron's right behind me. Mr. Esters will address the stormwater.
Your name, please?
Cameron Esters, uh, 2633 Thames Valley Close Court.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is this the laser? Okay. We have proposed retention areas, uh, right here in the single-family. We have this, we've kind of set aside a lot right here to use as retention, and then this area or in between all the townhomes will be one of the big, uh, main retention areas for everything to come through. We've got several, several feet, of course, we haven't actually designed any basin yet, but we will do that as part of our process once we get this approved and moving forward.
Uh, yes, sir, would you explain to Ms. Martin her question about water retention and how a development is required to retain the water that's on their property?
Right, so essentially, any new, uh, impervious surface, so roads, houses, uh, that all creates more runoff, as you know. And so we are required to, uh, size a basin, drain all of our water there that holds that additional runoff. That is just a part of the requirements, and we'll make sure, I think in this particular area, it's a, we're looking at a kind of regional basin, because you have offside properties flowing there, and there's not really anywhere else for it to go. So we'll make sure to take into account any outside area that's also coming, and we'll make sure to size the basin appropriately for that.
Yeah, we want, we want acts, not words. We want everything to be fixed. You're talking, you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
But you, you're not doing anything. So what's the point?
Well, ma'am, if you, if you, if you have a question, would you come to the microphone, please, so we can hear you?
So, so before you, before you go, would you also address her last question? Uh, it said, she said that there's some aerial lines there. Yeah. So, uh, so I assume.
Right in here. Yeah, so the transmission lines will have an easement, and so we'll stay outside of that easement. Right, right. And so typically, with your larger transmission lines, there's 100-foot easement, so 50 feet each side of the line, and so that'll be, we'll stay outside of that easement. Sir.
And then, so, so last question. Would it be fair to say that this is a, this is a proposal, but the conditions on the site may change this proposal? So for example, the calculations of the retention, the exact location of the transmission lines, et cetera. So, uh, while this generally would adhere, uh, let's say you just had to have additional retention and had to take one of these lots out, you would be required to do that, correct?
So we'll take out the townhomes that were duplexes as required, and make sure we have the proper amount of storage for the entire property, everything that's draining there, make sure the sinkholes are properly, uh, taken care of, and, uh, just no buildings are built on top of them, whatever it would take.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you had a question? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
My name is Kayla A. Colorado. I live on seventeen ninety-eight River Street.
On what street?
No, I'm talking about what he say. There's many roads in the street all over Kentucky that they have holes, and they only say, "We're gonna fix it," but they don't fix it. There's too many accidents. There's too many peop, there's too many people getting on the road, and their tires get stuck in those holes. So they need to fix it. We don't want words. We want action. Okay?
Yes, ma'am. That, that has nothing to do with this project.
No, I'm just.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question about the hole, so that's, that was it.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Yes, sir. Something di- different than the density or the traffic or the water retention?
William Buckman, senior, five oh four Memphis Junction Road.
Okay. Swear to tell the truth?
I swear to truth.
Thank you, sir.
On your single-family, back at the bottom, on the right, you have a road that looks like it's going to Memphis Junction Road. But all of your, what Rachel gave me was all your traffic was going to Nashville Road. I live right across the road from that, so I'm curious whether you're planning to develop that and all the traffic can go out toward Memphis Junction Road.
Mr. Buckley, are you, are you referring to that stub street?
Yes.
Yes, see, I, I see. Okay. So probably staff could address that and maybe the applicant as well. I, I think he's referring to the, the requirement of a stub street.
So they're showing a stub, but they haven't consulted with staff as to any proposed use or development for that property or if it would connect to Memphis Junction at some point. We're, we don't know of those plans, but the applicant might be able to answer that.
We can't answer that with any real definition. I mean, it would be disingenuous for us to suggest that there might not be a connection to Memphis Junction Road someday. We're required to stub, and we're doing that. And that's kind of as far as we can give any assurance at this point.
Does your client own that piece of property?
Yeah, I think we own all the way, yeah. We own, we own it. I don't know if it's the same entity, but same gentleman, yes.
So it would be fair to say that right now, you're meeting the requirement to stub because even if someone else owned that property, you'd still have the requirement to stub that street. Is that correct?
That stub is not there based on any plan we have. It's just, we're just doing what we are supposed to do. And then if we develop that, we've got to come back to staff and, and I don't know what we might have to do to Memphis Junction Road, depending on.
And so, but that would be a different, that would be a different hearing. And then at that point, you'd be meeting your requirement to have multiple accesses to, for fire, safety, ambulance, all those things.
Exactly.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, is there anyone else that has a question about this request tonight? Okay, hearing none would call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-three thirty-one ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Next item tonight is twenty twenty-three thirty-two Z County, A. Himalaya, USA Holdings LLC has filed an application to rezone approximately fourteen point eight one acres located at fifty-five forty and fifty-six oh four Louisville Road from Ag to RM four multifamily residential. RM four multifamily residential and highway business with a general development plan.
Mr. Chair.
Chair Warren, before you start, just on the voting for this one. Sorry, it's me. For the voting on this one, I had it wrong on the agenda. It's just gonna be the four county representatives and Commissioner Brown voting for this one. It's gonna be.
Hold on just a second. So none of the city commissioners?
Correct. This one's actually gonna be in the Plum Springs area of influence.
Okay, so we take, we take the city commissioners out and Mr. Brown. Plum, Plum, Plum Springs.
It'll be the four county and then Mr. Brown.
Okay. So this, this will be, uh, uh, Ms. Drane, Mr. Graham, Mr. Starks, Mr. Volker, and Mr. Brown. Okay, thank you very much for correcting that.
Great. We had a pre-application meeting on April the twelfth for the properties that you mentioned and that are highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture and RM four. The current land use is agriculture and multifamily residential, and the future land use is commercial. Again, the applicants are proposing to rezone from agriculture and RM four to RM four and HB, which is highway business, in order to develop the properties with a maximum of two hundred and sixty-four multifamily residential units and a mixture of commercial uses. And the site can, plan can be found on page nine of your packet. Looking down at the bottom of the page, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommendation is approval pending public, uh, public hearing testimony and discussion, discussion of a couple of items. Staff has noted considerations relating to loss of prime farmland and residential amenities that are planned for the RM four portion of the development. Looking at the prime farmland on page two, a large portion of the properties are designated as prime, prime farmland. And then looking at the proposed open space for amenities, that is on page three. The applicants agreed in DPC number five for the RM portion of the development. The property will be developed with internal sidewalks connecting parking areas to buildings. The development shall include a minimum of thirty percent open space, which will include community recreation space such as a clubhouse, swimming pool, playground, picnic area, or a dog park. The attached development plan appears to depict a clubhouse, but there are no other amenities shown. The DPC as written does not require that the development include all of the listed amenities. Rather make such amenities optional. That is all we have for staff report. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, um, so it's shown with those amenities.
I think that's a question.
Okay, got it.
Question for me?
Questions, Kevin? Can we put in the, can we put into the binding elements that'll be a clubhouse and pool?
We what?
A clubhouse and pool.
So, um, had the applicant had a better lawyer, we would have already had some of that in here. We, we didn't make it all entirely optional. We, we said that we shall do some of that. To be candid, we don't wanna commit to a pool. Not saying there won't be one. We're happy to commit to a clubhouse.
I'll strug, I'll struggle. I'll struggle with the approval.
The problem, Kevin, is the, is just you got a lot of.
I mean, three-story, I mean, and, I mean.
There's just not much amenities there, even if he puts the pool and the clubhouse in.
Okay, so let's see. Well, let me ask you two questions. Do you want more amenities?
Pardon me?
Do you want more amenities, or you're gonna vote against me?
And I'm gonna struggle with it as well.
So there's a separate question. Are you requiring a pool? Does it ha, does that have to be one of the amenities?
I'm trying to help you here.
I'm asking for one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It would help, it would help my decision.
All right.
Yes, with that, with that many units, three-story buildings, I think you've got to have, I mean, I, I mean, I like the amenities that y'all say you sh, that you might do. But I'd rather see it in there.
That's mainly, I'll just tell you, my draftsmanship that, uh, none of this is designed or engineered, and so we don't wanna paint ourselves into a corner. So, but I understand what you're telling me.
Yeah, we're just trying, we're just trying to tie some of that down so that we get that.
Kevin, before you leave, is this a homeowners association? Will it be? One, one minute.
Oh, this will be single owner shit.
Single, okay. All right.
Yes, yes. So we can, we can add specifically that we'll have a clubhouse and a pool.
Thank you.
Yes, and. All right, let me get it. So, read that to me, Ham.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was wrong. Look at, we're, of course, still in the RM four section, Roman five. And that's where you have said, "may include." And so we'll say after, after recreational space, which was mandatory, and then we'll delete "such as" and say, "shall include."
Those two items.
A clubhouse, swimming pool, playground, picnic area. So we're not, we're gonna delete those.
I'm okay if those are listed as permissive, but I don't wanna say we will do all of those. We will commit to the two big ones, obviously, the.
Shall include a clubhouse and swimming pool and may include playground, picnic area, or dog park.
That's fine.
All those people, you better have a playground somewhere.
Right. You're, you're right.
So I, I, could I clarify? In, in the original, there, there was no requirement for the playground, and we have just added the pool and the, the clubhouse. Is that correct?
It was basically worded that we would have recreational space "such as," and they were listed. And we've changed that to say we will have those two items. And we, I expect there will be more stuff, but they're not mandatory.
And this recreational space, there's no area for it. I, I see what you're doing, and I, and I'm trying to help. Is there an area that's, that, a size of this recreational space?
It may require a redesign from what we've got up there to do the two things we just committed to. I'm not, I just don't know.
Got it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
We call your applicant up here, Mr. Brooks, that he agrees to these.
Parash Patel.
Yes, sir. If you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
Parash Patel, sixty-two Caleb, New Jersey, Princeton, New Jersey.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And you've heard the proposed amendments to your property. Do you agree to those? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a, uh, comment, opposition to this request? All right. Thank you. Hearing none, commissioners, uh, the four county commissioners and Plum Springs would call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-three thirty-two Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drane. Yes, sorry. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion is approved. Goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-three thirty-six ZBG. Diggs on the River LLC, care of Eddie Hanks and Joy Beth Hanks, have filed an application to rezone approximately twenty-two point nine six acres located at zero seventeen-ten, seventeen-forty, seventeen-ninety-eight, eighteen forty-four, nineteen hundred, nineteen oh two, nineteen oh four, nineteen thirty-six, nineteen forty, nineteen seventy, nineteen ninety-two, two, two, zero, one, zero, two oh four oh, and two one four zero. River Street, from general bus, business, highway to business, and light industrial, and light industrial to planned unit development with a general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on March twenty-ninth of this year for all those properties located on River Street. The applicants are proposing to rezone approximately twenty-three acres along River Street from general business, highway business, and light industrial to PUD. The proposed development incorporates a mixture of anticipated uses, including retail, restaurants, bars or lounges, multifamily residential, a craft brewery or distillery, office and professional, and overnight accommodation uses. So the current zoning of those properties is again, general business, highway business, light industrial, and then there's also portions in the floodplain. The current land use is single-family and multifamily residential, commercial, industrial, and vacant. And then the proposed zoning is PUD and then floodplain. Oh, sorry, and the future land use is, um, not on this, but it's a mixture of future land uses. So looking back to the concept, and then looking down to staff's recommendation on the bottom of page one. Staff's recommendation is for approval pending any public hearing testimony and any discussion of a couple of points. So the proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Staff has noted considerations relating to the development standards for the PUD and outdoor dining activity areas in proximity to residential uses internal to the development. And that's over on page two, and looking to the layout lot sizes and setback section, which is about midway down the page. So the development will adhere to the GB development standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, except for the percentage of residential uses permitted on the first floor of any structure and the maximum building size. And so under the proposed PUD, residential uses will be allowed in unlimited quantities on the first floor. Buildings will be allowed in excess of ten thousand square feet. The narrative concept plan that was submitted for the PUD also references CB standards in paragraph two, which is central business. Staff notified the applicants that this is likely a typo due to GB standards being referenced in all other sections of the application and asked that the applicants correct this. However, this was left unaddressed. Staff also asked the applicants to confirm that the outdoor dining or activity areas for the development will meet the required setbacks given the proximity to proposed residential uses that are internal to development, to the development, and this was also left unaddressed. And then our next consideration point is regarding the proposed density, which is on page three and looking to surrounding density, which I actually think, yeah, there we go. And so densities along River Street range from two point zero four dwelling units per acre to fifteen point seventy-seven dwelling units per acre. The median density is five point two three, and the average density is six point zero six. The proposed density per DPC, uh, five is sixteen point thirty-three dwelling units per acre. However, only three hundred and seven units are shown on the concept plan. This results in a density of thirteen point thirty-seven dwelling units per acre. Staff requested that the applicants revise the DPCs to match the concept plan or update the concept plan to show the three hundred and seventy-five units referenced in the DPCs. However, this was left unaddressed by the applicants. That's all that staff have for this, but I'm happy to answer your all's questions.
Commissioners, any questions before we hear from the applicant? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here or the representative?
Chair Warren, Chris Davenport, still under oath. So she is right. The narrative should reference GB. So she is right, the narrative should reference G B, not C B. That is, the, the C is a typo, because the intent here is basically, for most intents and purposes, this is a general business type of development, with the exception of the first floor maximum of residential usage, and then the square footage usage. Those would normally be capped at fifty percent and ten thousand respectively, and the applicant, uh, my client, would like to vary from that. So that's, that, there's a, some precedent for that, actually, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the launch and the landing, if you remember that development on the river. Uh, that was one of the issues with that PUD, is trying to, to use, to get around those caps. Uh, I recall the old Sears building here downtown has, I believe, a similar PUD, uh, designed to get away from the maximum residential use on the first floor, so that's why we've asked for PUD. Uh, other than that, I'll say I've already referenced that application from a couple of weeks ago, but when I was here, uh, I knew this one was coming, and, uh, I knew in, in the span of two weeks, we'd have two, you know, very different, but similar in that we are trying to redevelop and utilize our river frontage, which I think is, is pretty neat and different, and, uh, just one of the notes that I noted in the staff report was that the proposal should result in compatible infill development, and is an opportunity for revitalization and redevelopment along the River Street corridor and Barren River. I know for my clients, that's the Hanks family that owns this property and is doing this, this has been in the works for, like, a decade. They have been accumulating these different parcels over time. Uh, these plans that you see, the concepts, actually, Ms. Hanks and Garrett, one of their employees who's an architect, they do this kind of in-house. So, uh, they're, they're very involved in this. I have seen, I don't have them here for you, but just the visual concept stuff that Garrett has, it's, it is ambitious, that's, that's the word I used two weeks ago, and I use it with this application too. It is an ambitious application, and I think it is neat that it's, it's the Hanks family, uh, and they've done this over time, and, uh, they're ready to start on it. So, uh, the other thing I think I need to address is the discrepancy in the unit count and, uh, the, uh, D P C and the concept. They sent a revised concept, that was something that was mentioned a couple of weeks ago, so I asked my client, typically, I know this board wants either a concept that shows the number, or they, you want to reduce the number, so I asked them a couple of weeks ago, which do they want to do? They wanted to stick with three seventy-five. Uh, Joy and Garrett did get to me, I think yesterday, a concept that has three seventy-five. I have it here, but I'll, I'll just say, you know, look at the concept that was provided. This is not your typical four or eightplex, like you've seen tonight, where you can count rooftops and you can say four, because these buildings aren't really designed like that. They've got, you can't really tell it, but these, what they have in store here are kind of townhome styles and, uh, brownstone styles, and uh, some of these buildings have mixed use in them, commercial and multifamily, hence the PUD, while we're trying to get away from that restriction. So I don't think the concept would really show you much, I've got copies of it if you'd like to see it. But they do believe that the three seventy-five number is reachable, once they fit their parking, and they do all those things. The other note that was mentioned was whether, uh, the, the, uh, buffer for outdoor seating areas and residential areas can be fulfilled. So the zoning ordinance requires a hundred foot between those uses. And, uh, Thad Lucas is also involved in this project, and so as we were, as we were getting the staff comments back, I've not asked to vary that in the PUD. You may recall, two weeks ago, we did vary that. Uh, I think for the launch site, the downtown site. We needed to do that because we felt like our internal distances could not comport to that. Thad tells me that should not be an issue here. So we haven't asked to adjust that in any way. He, he thinks that we can meet that. So I, I think that was the nature of the comment, am I misunderstanding that?
You're not, but just to confirm also the two hundred and fifty-foot setback requirement for any sort of, like, music or out, like, if there was a, a live band in the food truck area, that would all comply.
I think what would have to happen is, is they start this process, if they decide that they can't meet that, they'd have to come back and get a variance for that. Uh, I guess that, that would be before the Board of Adjustments. So there, there is a way for them to address that, I haven't addressed it here because they've told me they don't think they're gonna have to do that. Uh, but that's something, if it changes down in the future, they would have to. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have about this. I, again, I, it's, it's another unique, uh, development, uh, where you, they, they want to create this environment on the riverfront where you kind of live and you play where you live, and you try to eat where you live, so.
Chris, uh, I mean, I think it looks to be a great project, uh, I still struggle a little bit with this many units and no clubhouse, no pool, and just kind of giving an idea of, of a few amenities they might do, unless I missed that.
Well, you know, I heard, uh, Mr. Brooks say earlier that if they had a better attorney, that would have been addressed, and I guess mea culpa. And I'm sitting back here with Ms. Hanks, and I said, I think that's a preview of coming attractions. So, uh, let me look. We did, you know, we said that this shall include walking trails, outdoor seating areas, and outdoor recreation areas, and much like Kevin did, I then kind of gave a laundry list of what it could include. So let me put some in there with the shall, okay? Uh, it shall include walking trails, outdoor sitting areas. Uh, I'm sorry, it's a development, uh, D P C fourteen. Outdoor seating areas, comma, comma, a pool, comma, a clubhouse, including gym slash fitness area. Let me see what else I had in my notes. Think that's what I wanted to say. And I'll just tell you, when, when we talk about outdoor seating areas, their intention, that's going to be, you can see in the concept, fire pits and kind of a communal area stuff to get together and grill, do those things.
And I agree, you, you're not gonna spend this kind of money and not do those things, it's just better if we go ahead and address it.
I don't disagree with that one bit.
Just in the crazy chance that for some reason this deal comes unwound, we got it, right, we got it captured.
Uh, you know, the other thing I do want to mention is the walking trails that we've committed to, the, they envision that being along the, the floodplain down there in the river, and when we talked to staff, you know, uh, uh, it, it came up, you know, this is in the floodplain, you gotta do things certain way. And, uh, to the staff's credit, they said, I think I recall the comment, they, they liked that idea, they want to work with us to do that, and, and check all the regulatory boxes, uh, connect to the sidewalks. I, I was told as a part of this, there's a very ambitious greenways trail someday, headed north, and, uh, this would tie into, so.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport?
Thanks, could you come up, please?
Thanks.
Joy Hanks, my address, seven 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 Autumn Stone Court, Bell and Green, Kentucky, four two one oh three.
Swear to tell the truth.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Mrs. Hanks, let me ask you, if you agree to change this one condition on number fourteen, would you agree to this, the development shall include walking trails, outdoor sitting areas, a pool, a clubhouse, uh, including gym slash fitness area and outdoor recreation areas such as, but not necessarily including bocce ball courts and grilling areas?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, we actually have, this was a little bit of an older plan, so we have a more updated version, I thought, that we had sent in, but, um, we have a really big, nice pool, infinity pool also attached to it overlooking the river. We have a really cool, big clubhouse, it's gonna have all the stuff you would want in a clubhouse.
That's where a lawyer gets involved, and she says, let's put in an infinity pool, I said, let's commit to a pool.
Quit, quit trying to defend your lawyer, all right, any, any, any other comments for Ms. Hanks or Mr. Davenport? All right, is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, please. Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please.
Anamor, seventeen ninety-eight River Street, Lot twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this is beautiful, it is, um, but I would like to start by saying that unlike the other things that we've seen tonight, where the people commenting are next to the development, or down the road from the development, or worried about the traffic to the development, my, I'm not sure how this works, but, um, my, oh, there it is, okay, house is right here on the development, as well as these families and thirty other families on the development in a mobile home park.
Point, point to your house again, please.
Right here, where he plans to put in some kind of dog park, or sitting area, or whatever it says on the online website. Um, so I know that this is probably going to get developed at some point, because Barren River is being developed, and that's great, on thirty-one bypass. I would like a literal answer, if at all possible, from you, Mrs. Hanks, as to where I'm supposed to live. What is going to be done to me and my young family of a two-year-old and an eight-month-old, or these families who also have young children, and large families, and, like I said, thirty-plus families on the property, they want to rezone and put apartments and beautiful planning done.
So, uh, explain this, you're, you own a?
No, I rent the land from them, but I own my mobile home, as well as many other people inside the park, many of which are not movable because they are older homes, but we own our home.
But you don't own the lots?
I do not own the lot, so, but that is my question, is how am I expected to get compensation for moving, rehoming my new family?
I'm for Mr. Davenport to see if he can.
Well, let me, let me, before you sit down, is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has the same question? So we have one, two, three, four, five, okay, so, the, okay, but, but everybody has the same, okay, wait. But, okay, but, so everybody, everyone has the same question, and that is, the, you all own, the, own the mobile homes, but the, the land, you all are leasing the land from.
Mr. Hanks.
From Mr. Hanks, okay, so that's, that's the question, so that, is everybody understand that question?
Well, um, I personally. My name is Kayla A. Colorbottom.
Right.
I swear to tell the truth.
Okay.
Eleven seventeen ninety-eight River Street, Lot thirty-one.
Okay.
I've been there for almost nineteen, twenty years, okay? I have two kids, one eighteen, who has autism. And my youngest child, she has autism and she has seizures. Where am I supposed to live? Where do you want me to live? Where? There's two, my, my kid, my youngest child, my youngest, she's six. And I have another one, she's eight, she's gonna be eight in June, okay? There's not many places or schools that have, uh, disabilities, um, places for my kids. And it's hard, it is really hard. There's so many people that live in my, that, where I live, that have kids with disabilities as well. Where do you want us to live? Tell me, where do you want us to live?
Yes, ma'am, we understand your question, but here, you own the mobile.
I own the mobile home.
Just, let's finish, you, you all, or the other people here, own the mobile home.
Yeah.
But the Hanks own the property. So you're renting a lot from them?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm starting to understand.
We had to pay three hundred and ten dollars for water, sewer, and, um.
So this is a mobile home park?
Yeah.
I see, okay, so, 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 ju- just, just a minute, so the, the question on the floor from everyone here tonight is you all own your home.
Yeah.
But the Hanks own the property, correct? Okay. Okay, well, come up to microphone.
Another reason why this is a big issue is you might say, well, they own the land, you just move your home.
We're not saying that, just, just, we're just clarifying.
Right, and, um, that is the issue that has been brought to my attention from other people who live there. Uh, but I, I vaguely mentioned before that most of the homes in that park are too old to be moved. So while I own that property, I cannot move it off of their property. Also, the rent that we pay is geared towards low-income families, like she mentioned, we pay three hundred and ten dollars a month, and most homes, very similar to ours, are a thousand dollars a month, that these families will not be able to afford.
Okay, thank you, and so we understand, we understand, we're clear right now that the Hanks own the property, and you all, they own the ground, and you all own your mobile homes. And so, Mr. Davenport, do you want to address that, or Ms. Hanks?
I'll do my best, Chair Warren, uh, there is no disagreement about the, the ownership of the property, either the real or the personal. And that's a typical, what I understand from these folks, that is typical to my understanding with most mobile homes. They typically not owned by who owns the land. And, uh, I, I can tell you that they are not typically affixed to the land from a legal standpoint, so they're, they're not considered a fixture that goes with the deed. That doesn't really help the question, though. The, the real question that these folks are presenting, um, and it's a really tough one for me, because it's really not a, I don't have a legal answer to it. The legal answer is that the owner of the property is within their rights, assuming they are respecting a lease agreement that's in place, to request them to leave. That's, that's the legal fact, it's not satisfactory to anyone in the room in this circumstance. Ms. Hanks tells me a few things that maybe will give some comfort, uh, and, and you all suspect this, but when a project like this is presented, it, there will not be ground broke tomorrow, or next week, or next month. This will take time. Ms. Hanks tells me that it's her and Mr. Hanks' desire and goal to help and assist as much as possible. And the first way I can say that, she's already told me, she recognizes she does not own the mobile homes. And if they, she tells me they will do their best to assist in relocating those homes if they can, but I want to be clear, this is benevolence I'm speaking of. This is not a legal requirement. Having known Joy for a while, and Eddie for a while, I believe what they say, I think they're sincere. But from a legal standpoint, my words are hollow, it's just the fact of the matter. So leases of these type, once they expire, they begin to be, I can tell you that. And I suspect that they have been around for a long time, it sounds like, that's my impression. But even with the timeframe, this is expected to proceed under a year of written touch, okay? So all, all I can convey to these folks is, um, the sentiment that my client is delivering to me, and that is a desire to work with them. But I want to be clear, there's no development condition I could propose. That's a discussion between them and the Hanks, I'll just say. Maybe there would be some value the Hanks are willing, I understand that, and that's why I concede from the get-go, my words are hollow. There, I cannot, I cannot propose a legally binding condition that would satisfy all parties in this circumstance.
Okay, so here's, this, this is the other legal, I think, question for us, Ham, is, uh, gosh, that's a dilemma, that they, but, but, we can't, we can't make the Hanks do any that they don't. Sir, if you'd come to microphone, i- i- if you've got something, yes, sir, let, let's, let's, we'll hear your, your name, sir. What?
From Glass.
And your address?
Seventeen ninety-eight River Street.
All right, Mr. Glass, swear to tell the truth, all right.
All right, Mr. Glass, Troy Tuckhurst. All right.
So he's saying that they have plans on working with us. My problem is, we hear about this from the letter we get in the mail. We didn't know anything about it, so it sounds hollow to me also. You know what I'm saying? Like, they're surprised by it, we're surprised by it. We didn't know of anything. We hear rumors all the time. But nothing from them. I, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me that we have to hear about this in the mail and then we're all frantic, of course. You know, a lot of people don't even understand what they're looking at. And then we come in here and he's saying that they have plans for this. When are we gonna know about it? That, that's, that's my concern. I get, you can't answer my question and tell me what's gonna be done. But the communication is not there at all.
Thank you, sir. The, I think the question on the floor for the Planning Commission and the owners of the property, the Hanks and the folks that own their homes, that they are leasing a lot, is that what Mr. Davenport said is they're, the landowner owns the lots. And to the best of their ability, they are willing to work. But there is no promise of how that works. That's, am I saying that right, Mr. Moore?
So, Ham, one, one other thing I, uh, I, I'd like clarity on, uh, the Hanks own the property, uh, and I, and I appreciate the benevolence here. But, uh, I'm not, yeah, can you tell me, am I allowed to consider someone having to move off of the property in my decision? That's part of review process.
Ham, come to my place, so. You're making a decision about land use. The statutes and ordinances require, uh, people who want to have the zoning map amended sign an application by people who own sufficient title to the property to convey it. Um, that does not include the requirement that tenants agree. Um, and, um, obviously, these people are in possession of a portion of this property. And if they won't move voluntarily, then the Hanks will have to, uh, in whatever legal remedy they have, try to regain possession of the property. Um, so. Let, let, let Mr. Moore finish. I, I understand the, the challenge that's created by a, a, a mobile home that's not mobile. Now, if it turns out that that mobile home is somehow attached to the property or there's some dispute about whether these, uh, occupants of mobile homes have somehow gained some interest in, in the real estate, tho- those are all issues that the Hanks are gonna have to resolve on a case-by-case basis.
But, but not a part of our decision-making.
Correct. That is exactly right.
Yes, ma'am. It, it, I think, did you hear Mr. Moore and, and so if you've got one more, something different? Yeah.
Not pertaining to my physical home. I believe, and they can absolutely correct me, but on the other end of this, I don't know if they're developing that or not, it looks to me like it is. A preschool is right there. It is on the other side of, um, I guess, a little forest or ditch.
Going down River Streets before you get to your old residence.
But in this concept is a small preschool. It's called Academy for Little People. Um, I know children still go there. It is not vacant. It is not abandoned. I hear the children outside of my home every single day. So I would also like that taken into consideration of you guys today. Uh, not only would they possibly have to relocate all thirty young families or kick us out. Um, they would have to buy out or relocate a preschool right next to us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? We've heard from the audience tonight. And we have this amendment in front of us, uh, and we've heard from the audience tonight, so will we call for a motion, please?
Once again, I'm just gonna make a statement or I'll make a motion is, I think from our standpoint, and what we have to do, we can't take, like we, we talk about all the time, we have to take the motion out. And then I think that becomes something when it goes to the City Commissioners. And it is, that is, that is where that would go from a, a planning and zoning standpoint. And I know it's easy to say, but the.
No, no, no.
No.
No, no, no.
Absolutely. We are, we're glad you're here. We're glad you're voicing your concerns.
From a s- planning and zoning standpoint, I'm gonna make the motion to approve it. Because from our standpoint, that's where, now from where it goes from here, that's where y'all's discussion needs to go. I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the General Development Plan, docket number twenty, twenty-three, thirty-six ZBG. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Adopted Focus Twenty Thirty Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliances with the objections and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map is in agreement with the Adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion to include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Chair Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drenn. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion's approved. It goes to Bowling Green City Commission. So, so those in the audience tonight, hang on just a minute. Those in the audience tonight, there, there is another hearing before the City Commission for final approval for this. We are just making a recommendation tonight. And so if you would like to express your comments, your questions or your concerns, there will be another hearing and you will be notified of our City Commission meeting to express your concerns, so.
I think we're gonna clarify that. I might have misspoken.
Yeah, let, let me clarify that. So there will not be another hearing like this. Uh, it will go to the City Commission, uh, for two readings, uh, uh, and they will consider the Planning Commission's recommendation they, they just made, which is for approval. Um, you will want to contact this city or show up, uh, and find out when that's gonna be on the agenda for the city. We don't, we don't exactly know when that is going to be because we don't set the city's agenda. We only set ours. Uh, but then you will want to ask, uh, likely the city clerk for options for being able to speak at the City Commission and speak to those commissioners. And that also doesn't necessarily preclude you from contacting the City Commissioner or the mayor either to express your concerns, so.
So one other point of clarification, we, we misspoke on one other count. You won't get a notification on this one like you did here. So you'll need to, if you, if you want to, to voice your concerns, you'll need, a- a- as, as they indicated earlier, you'll need to, you'll need to call them, contact them and find out when this is on their agenda and then request permission to speak there.
For two seven oh, three nine, three, three thousand. That'll be the, that's the general city, uh, line for the city, i- any and all departments. So you can ask for either the city attorney or the city clerk.
I think she's asking if it's the same number as far as the project number here. And was that your question?
Oh, yeah. I see. How do you identify it? I see what you're saying.
No, there'll be a, there'll be a different, uh, docket number altogether. They do it by ordinance.
Did she just give the location of the property? So that'll do it? So if you make your phone call, give the location of the property. It will indeed have a dic- a different docket number, but just tell them what you're calling about and then they'll identify it for you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We have, uh, two other items tonight, Ben. Do we read both of these same time or are they?
Uh, they probably need to be separate.
Okay. Our, our next item tonight is City County Planning Commission is filing an application to re-adopt and amend the Smiths Grove, Oakland and Wood- Woodburn Rural Village Focal Point Plans and make them part of the Focus Twenty Thirty Comprehensive Plan.
I'll just make this real quick unless you all have questions. I did have a memo that we sent out in the packets. I did bring, uh, print copies. Uh, it's mostly, it's online themed, but I did bring print copies and give it to each of the, the commission representatives from those small cities. Uh, but, uh, just be happy to answer any questions if you have any. If not, I do have a suggested motion on the second page of the memo.
Okay. So our first is item number nine, uh, regarding the Smiths Grove, Oakland, Woodburn Rural Village, uh, Focal Point Plans. On the back of the page, you have a suggested motion. So I hear a motion, please.
I make the motion to adopt the amendments to the Smiths Grove, Oakland and Woodburn Rural Village Focal Point Plans and incorporate them as part of the Focus Twenty Thirty Comprehensive Plan. My motion is based on the findings of fact and the testimony presented in this public hearing that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment meets the requirements of the Kentucky Revised Statutes, Chapter One Hundred and more specifically KRS one hundred, one eighty-three through KRS one hundred ninety-seven. Further, I request that the findings of fact include a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the pro- proponents and/or opponents of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Chair Sissel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Drenn. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cassidy.
Yes.
And Chair Warren.
So motion's approved. Uh, that's final action from the, uh, Planning Commission. Our next item is City County Planning Commission is filing an application to re-adopt and amend various elements of the subdivision regulations. Mr. Peterson.
Sir, likewise, you had a memo in your packet outlining, uh, the, the, the timeline as well as a, a list of summary of changes, uh, to the subdivision regulations as well as the timeline and who we sent that all to, uh, for consideration. Uh, that's been, uh, out on the web and, and so on for about a month now. So, uh, again, be happy to answer any questions. Uh, there's a suggested motion on page two of that information as well.
I make the motion to adopt the changes to subdivision regulations. My motion is based on the findings of fact and the testimony presented in this public hearing and the subd- that the subdivision regulations amendment meet the requirements of the Kentucky Revised Statutes, Chapter One Hundred and more specifically KRS one hundred two seventy-three through KRS one hundred two ninety-two. Further, I request that the findings of fact include a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the proponents and/or opponents of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Sure.
Chair Sissel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Drenn. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cassidy.
Yes.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved, uh, Planning Commission final action. Any other items tonight, Ben?
Just one quick thing I'll mention. We have hired two interns to help out with our, uh, MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, to help out with our Bike Walk BG events, the bicycling pedestrian advocacy group. And, uh, got a lot of events planned and, and so we're looking forward to have them. Uh, that was, was, is in our budget and, uh, they, they'll be starting, uh, next week. So just wanted to let you know that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, Commissioners, appreciate, appreciate y'all being here tonight. Staff, thank you all. And it's about bedtime.